We'll call it an order. Do a 1.1 election of officers for the 2023 fiscal year.
I would nominate Jim for president.
Any discussion? Okay, sorry, yeah, I'll try. So Jennifer Goodman nominated Jim Foot as president. So we would just need a second.
Second.
So Soraya's second.
You hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
I got you. Any discussion?
Antisto?
Yep.
Foot?
I'm staying.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Suderville? Suderville? Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Now you're on the vice president.
I'm going to nominate Lanny Smith for vice president.
I'll second.
Okay, so if you didn't hear that, Soraya nominated Lanny for vice, Jim Foot seconded that. Any discussion?
Antisto?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Abstain.
Suderville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed. So Mr. Foot would take maybe.
Yeah. Now you can stay there. I mean, it's okay for tonight. I mean, well, or you can move up if you want to.
I'll just stay right here.
Okay, we'll get you there next time. Does he want to moderate? Oh, yeah, he'll need you.
Yeah, he'll, yeah, he's.
We'll make sure we get the camera on you and the side.
All right, so I guess called me in order by the sweep. Foot, allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. 2.0 consent?
Yep.
I've moved to approve the consent, July 11, 2022 Board of Education consent.
I say that. It's been moved and seconded. Jacob moved it, Lanny seconded.
Antisto?
Yes.
Foot?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Suderville? Joe Aaron?
Yes, I'm sorry. I keep putting you on mute and then for this.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed.
3.0 patron input. Welcome to the patron portion of our board meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person except to ask clarifying questions. Board members shall not interact with speakers of the public forum. Nothing matter other than policy issues will refer to the administration. Comments should be limited to issues and not referred to personalities. Presentations must be relevant to the issue, both the civility and dignity of the board. Your participation in our public forum is a matter of public record. Should you for any reason feel compelled to speak about or again say personal persons, you may be held accountable in a court of law. Thank you for coming. We have four Janet Houchen.
And I got the time. I got the time. As a CPA, I rely heavily on my membership with the American Institute of CPAs. The AICPA provides guides to the CPA profession by providing legislative guidance, education, each of the vast specialties, and access to professional liability insurances. These are just a few of the ways the AICP assists in my professional industry. And believe me, when a thousand pages of tax legislation are released the week before Christmas, you can bet CPA firms, large and small, are looking through the AICPA to help unravel the complex legislation. As a former school board member, I relied on KASB much like I currently rely on the AICPA. In my opinion, KASB serves to assist school board members in the prevention of costly missteps by providing proper board training, professional assistance in public school law, and access to training conferences. While many of you have some school board policy experience, none of you are professionals with a background in public law and policy building. While some of you may have HR experience, I suspect none of you are versed in HR law as it relates relates to public schools. As unpaid volunteers serving part-time, a school board can be a vulnerable body and can quickly get itself into uncharted legal situations if not properly trained. KASB provides school board member training that I've found critical. Outside political influences can lead a board into tumultuous waters, and I will hand out an article that demonstrates that. I am of the opinion that if Lewisburg votes to become the only Kansas school district to forfeit its membership in KASB, we will open the district to potential legal exposure, and we will be putting ourselves in a grave hiring situation. Kansas is experiencing a shortage of school administrators and educators, and forfeiting our KASB membership would exacerbate this problem. KASB assists with professional searches and supports those professionals once they're hired. I would not want to be a school administrator in a district that's board does not have access to the knowledge at KASB. My expectation of any school board member that votes to forego KASB membership is that each provide a very well-prepared reason supporting your decision. I also expect you to articulate a well-thought-out alternative to addressing issues of public school policy, HR law access, and board training. The cost of membership is not insignificant at over $11,000 per year for dues and $2,300 for legal support. However, this cost is far less than an attorney on the clock who is having to advise a board that's gotten themselves into legal trouble. And I provided a copy of what did it say here? Of the article, which contains references the drama that has occurred in the governor's school district.
So Mr. Ryan, Joe Aaron on?
Thank you, sir.
You? All right, Jim, we'll go to the next.
Leave Ossler.
Good evening, Leave Ossler. I teach seventh grade language arts at the middle school. I am speaking this evening on behalf of myself and 22 other teachers from across the district. The following is an email that was sent to you all yesterday. I know some of you have received it, so I would like to read back to you this evening. Board members, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your service. As we know, you've held several special meetings outside of your normal meeting schedule. As professional educators, we realize that school districts are at the forefront of verbal and social scrutiny. Like you, we hope to heal the divide between the board and all staff members, so we can work together to seek what is best for our district. The topic of concern is the recent conversations regarding our district's membership in KASB. As teachers, we believe that there are many benefits to renewing our annual membership with this proactive and protective organization. As Jessica Bernard, attorney for Gwen Mundorf, stated that along with hiring her firm, KASB would add one more supplemental layer of protection. That statement resonated with us. As educators, we want to provide the best care possible for our district and our students. Through your investigation, you have opened the door to a successful team with Gwen Mundorf Law Firm. By remaining a member of KASB and joining forces with such an excellent law team, we can set ourselves up for success. The protection of KASB will directly assist the law firm, our superintendent and administrators, our district office staff, as well as our students. In this day and age, in the culture we are living in, it is imperative that all three entities work together for the protection of our entire district. Board members, staff, and students. The protection that will be provided will be proactive rather than reactive. Nonrenewal in KASB will force the district to operate in a reactive state, and as professional educators, we work in a proactive culture. As a board, you have gone above and beyond in seeking other avenues, asking the tough questions, and researching resources to replace KASB. We applaud you for your efforts in this search, but urge you to consider at least one more year of membership with KASB to experience the overarching umbrella of protection they provide for our entire district. Thank you.
Thank you, sweetie.
I'm probably going to butcher your name here, but Lauren Moscodelly?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Moscodelly. I'm a parent of two children in this district. For those of you that had a chance to respond to my email, thank you for your time and conversations. I'm speaking in regards to decision to not renew our membership with KASB. I emailed all of you, asking your current stance on this issue, and if opposed, what is the benefit of us leaving the KASB? I came to you truly trying to seek to understand. I heard a variety of different reasonings for your positions on the issues, one of which was cost that was brought up. Our membership cost would be $11,171.35. This is 0.04%, and for those mathematicians, I did round up, that of our published budget from last year. I know we are expecting somewhat of an anticipatory increase in our budget for this year. I heard our policy is up to date until December. I contacted KASB and Dr. Bierman, who mentioned that the policy services are for more than just writing policy, but also for interpreting policy. In my contact with those two entities, it was also stated that it is possible that some policy could be passed at the federal level outside of the standard June and December timeframe. I heard this is what returning board members wanted. Unfortunately, I didn't get the chance to hear from all of you and hear your reasonings. Finally, I continue to hear there are differences in values between the NSBA and our district. However, no one has been able to articulate what those differences in values are, and instead mention these organizations are political. Also, please note, it was always NSBA that was mentioned, not KASB. When talking to my children, working with clients, and making decisions in my own life, I always try to do a cost-benefit analysis. From my perspective, after doing extensive research and attempting to have a conversation with all of you, there seems to be no true benefit to our children and our district to leave our membership with the KASB at this time, but there could be a significant cost. I understand that many of you are upset with the national organization, and I feel that KASB should be held responsible because of it. However, there is no alternative to the policy interpretation services. We would be at risk, and there is no telling what other things could be impacted by us choosing not to renew. I asked one of you if the board has sent any formal communication to KASB to let them know your disagreement with their position on their choice to remain a member of the NSBA. They stated they were not aware of any such attempt of that being made. At this time, no other board in Kansas has voted to not renew with KASB. We would be venturing into uncharted territory. I'm asking you to truly take the politics out of this decision and vote with logic and reasoning. If this is something you want, you need time to effectively research this, find an alternative solution, do your due diligence, and truly gain the support of this community. My daughter is going into third grade this year, and she has yet to have what many would consider a normal school year. I think we always put our children in a place of reprieve from the politics and provide stability for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Purdeman.
I'm here tonight hoping that the board will vote on and approve the KASB renewal. In my opinion, the benefits KASB provides to our district greatly outweighs the perceived drawbacks we've heard in the past few months about KASB or the NASB. In the last two years, district personnel have attended 11 events. 200 individuals report requests, calls, and emails have been logged. This doesn't include hundreds of informational emails sent to board and staff, or the monthly board clerk Zoom meetings that would have been missed if the board waited to renew until December. I have yet to hear proven replacement options for many of the benefits KASB provides. While some parents and board members may be against renewing KASB membership, it appears our superintendent, administrators, board clerk, and other staff who use KASB services are in favor of membership renewal. Even Gwen Mundorf, your newly appointed legal counsel, has recommended a subscription to a policy service. KASB is currently our only choice. The representative from Gwen Mundorf went further to suggest that it would take four to five full-time employees dedicated to providing the same type of policy updates that KASB provides. I know Michelle DeMarowski, our Board of Education representative, has been mentioned as an alternative, but the manpower needed doesn't seem to match up with Gwen Mundorf's forecasting. Michelle may be able to forward new state legislation passed. She may not be aware of federal law changes, legal case precedents, and legal opinions. Also, what if she doesn't fulfill her promises or even get reelected in August? I'm told that KASB sends only $165 of our renewal to NASB. The fight with NASB doesn't belong at our district level. Withholding dependable resources and hindering staff can lead to frustration, excess work, mistakes, and low morale. If the administration and staff aren't on board with the suggested change, then let's remove the risks and renew the membership. Finally, this $14,000 expense out of our $30 million budget has taken up over two hours of discussion of the last four board meetings. Yet it only took 10 minutes to review and unanimously approve all of their suggested policy updates in July. The membership renewal will not affect the average parent in the district. It will allow the district to run business as usual and aid our new high school principal. Let's support our administration and staff. Let's move forward and focus our efforts on elevating our district. Determine the resources needed to unleash the untapped potential of our administration and staff. Evaluate progress and hold people accountable. Make sure our highest priority continues to align with our vision statement to lead Kansas in the success of each student.
4.1. 4.0 discussion, 4.1 teaching and learning presentation goes one and four.
Yep, several items on there first, and she said in the front row. I want to formally introduce our new high school principal, Amy Van Reen. So she's with us tonight, and obviously will be part of the discussion with some of the policies as we get through there tonight. And even though she officially hasn't been on the clock, her car's been at the high school every day. And she's a swimming lesson, so that's why she has a better tan than any of us down here. But she's been working hard. In fact, they were hiring a social studies teacher today that you guys approved a little bit ago. So right now, we're fully staffed, headed into August, hopefully no more surprises district-wide. But Amy has been working very hard getting to know her staff. She sent out a welcome letter just encouraging staff to come see her. And so hopefully she's had some good informal conversations, and I know she's planning for a great year. So I just wanted to formally bring her here and welcome her. And like I said, I know she'll be a part of some of these ongoing conversations we're going to have tonight about some policies as well, so welcome, Amy.
Thank you.
Second, and it was kind of discussed because some of you couldn't get into the board page, but we are launching a new website. Our other website, and a lot of school districts have it, because it was called SOX, because it was a very affordable website. We looked at another option. This is a website company named Aptige. And so we just, when we do surveys, or so whether formal surveys or informal with our parents, you know, usually communication comes up. And so as we looked at some of the items, how we can get communication out, our website, it was viable, but how could we give it a kind of a better look and more user-friendly? And so Aptige, and you can just see just by the look if you can remember what our last one looked like. Amy, there you are. But we have a live feed. Obviously, this will really be updated. We'll give access to this live feed. We'll have to have training, but for our, you know, kind of who posts now on Twitter and Facebook. So obviously, our principals and myself, Mr. Tappin, or some of our coaches, AD, so when Mr. Pickman's changing a day, a game because of rain or whatever, that'll instantly go there as it goes out. Kendall's here, and she's right there. So it just is a more fresh look. They have a lot of good support. This would have never occurred without Jenny Yoder. She has worked a lot on this with Aptige and tons of trainings. I just get the emails and know Jenny's going to do it, and so press delete, but Jenny has been awesome. I want to give a quick shout out to even our high school video production. If I didn't pull up the middle school. Every one of our websites now has kind of just a little flyby introduction of our school, so we can quickly watch the middle school.
Welcome to Lewisburg Municipal.
Oh, sorry.
LMS is a place where students can truly thrive. Hands-on learning by a wonderful staff, always ready to help. Students don't crumble. LMS provides four classes, such as ELA, social studies, EE, and then myriad of other courses, the foreign language, and art. Amazing classes. There's many clubs on Friday and Sunday, Wildcats, such as Student Council, Kahoot Club, and many more. Middle school also means school-associated sports, and that is no exception. Set mindset and the teammates program are also a staple here at LMS. Set mindset is a group and class activity which students taught a key lesson for how to be a more empathetic and successful person in the future. The teammates program is here to assist your child in any situation. Here at LMS, our goal is to build responsible and accountable students, ready to take on future academic and worldly challenges. Here at LMS, your student is bound to thrive. LMS is ready for you, your future awaits.
And it's probably, yeah, Jared. Also, is there a C? Tiffany Musso in there? She's here as well. So, you know, so we still have some items still still take care of. There'll be training for the board, training for our staff, and admin as well, but could not have been done without Jenny. And so just said, gives us a little new facelift, so an online bond issue here. So, but we'll continue to work on it. I just wanted to show that off a little bit. And then the last two, Mr. Tappin's going to come forward and talk about two items. One is KISA. KISA is our accreditation model. So it's something that all 286 districts and even the private schools have to be accredited every five years. And Mr. Tappin has led a group, and some of the staff members that are really involved in this are here tonight as well. Just to walk through where we're at with the accreditation process. It is very important. We all know you want to lead a district that's accredited. We want to work in a district that's accredited. There are districts that potentially aren't. There's also districts around us that are accredited, but with condition and are conditionally accredited. We don't want that label as well. So I've worked very hard through this process. So part of it is to kind of share where we're at in this journey and where we're headed. So Mr. Tappin, take it away.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to present. And as Dr. Bierman said, accreditation is obviously important. And one of the areas that's most important is as families look for a community to raise their children, they go to an accountability report, and right on their report, it talks and says whether a school district has been accredited or not. Our journey started about five or six years ago, and Dr. Bierman, if you go ahead and go to the first slide. First of all, KISA stands for Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. Once upon a time, school districts were not approved as a district. They were, the buildings within the district were approved on their own. Back in the day, it was called quality performance accreditation. So there's been a shift, and part of that shift is now informing all of our stakeholders about what that shift looks like, and where our areas of focus are, and where our areas of improvement are going to happen. Part of that process is talking to you as board members about the accreditation. And I'm fairly safe to say, if I asked all seven of you what KISA stood for about 60 seconds ago, you probably wouldn't have known. But don't worry, because when I did this presentation to our staff during the spring, most of them didn't know what KISA stood for. But most of them, the veterans at least, knew what quality performance accreditation stood for. So things have changed a little bit after the, or over the last five or six years. So part of that journey took place back in 2017 and 18. That's when Dr. Bierman piloted with the dis, with the school board associate, not the school board association, the Department of Ed, and became one of the first schools to go through an early accreditation process. And veteran board members, you may remember doing that back in 2017 and 18. By doing so, we started back in 1819 in year one, going through a needs assessment. And so our staff went through four different areas to focus on and find two areas that we really needed to key in on. And when we did that back in 2018-19, the two that rose to the top were relevance and relationships. And we started the process, and quite honestly, it's a five-year process, and in year one, that was our only goal, and we achieved it. We decided we were going to focus on those two areas. Year two came, and we completed the survey and the summary, and we met our outside visitation team, which is three administrators from three different school districts. And they looked at what we were doing, and they kind of gave that rubber stamp, because year two is not actually your accreditation year, because it's a five-year process. Well, then COVID hit, and every district had to cross the straits, cross the state, had the opportunity to push pause, and we did during 2020-21. And it was a good choice, because we had a lot of other things that were on on our minds at that time. Last year hit, 2021, 2022, and now we're back into year three. And that's what we really wanted to start focusing on, is bringing our staff together with administrators and really start talking about those two areas. And if you remember, I just said, relationships and relevance were those two. And we started talking about those, and I'll talk a little more in detail, but we got rid of one of them, and we changed from relevance to rigor. And when we talk about that, we met with our outside visitation team. Dr. Bierman, give it back to slide. We're still telling our story this year, and we really focused this spring on filling out the documentation to talk about a lot of things that we were doing well in our district and a lot of areas that we needed to focus on. And when we go to our accountability report, I'm going to show you three different areas that we're really starting to focus on, but next year is year four. Year four, we're going to do the same thing that we did this year, but we're going to dig a little deeper. And as parents, you probably saw some surveys come out in the spring from the district, asking you to fill some things out about what kind of education were your sons and daughters getting, what kind of communication were you getting from your schools? Our staff, our KISA team, will start using that data to make some changes. In fact, part of the Aptige new website, which also is an app, if that wasn't shared, you can do it on your phone, which we think will get used even more than our website. But some of that communication through the KISA and through the process led to some of these types of changes. So we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to make improvements, and we're going to continue to identify some areas that we need to review. Finally, in 2023-24, that outside visitation team, they write a summary report, they submit that to the ARC, the Accreditation Review Council. The Accreditation Review Council is actually the ones that give the. The Accreditation Review Council is actually the ones that give the school districts across the state the approval for accreditation. So, the outside visitation team, we work with very intensely, especially in year four and in year five, because what they put down with regards to USD 416 is what that ARC bases their decision on. So, they are key members. They're not our district members. One now works for Lawrence, another one works for our CASM organization, and the third one is the superintendent in Anderson County. What they write up is about USD 416. That's what we're going to be accredited on. So, that's why it's so important that we share our story of the good things that we're doing here in our district. So, you heard earlier in this quote, Kansas leads the world in the success of each student. That's a mission statement and vision for the state of Kansas through the Department of Education and Dr. Randy Watson. And he defines that a successful high school graduate will have the academic preparation, cognitive preparation, the technical skills, the employability skills, and the civic engagement to be successful in post-secondary education in the attainment of an industry, industry-recognized certification or in the workforce without the need for remediation. And you can see that there's five different areas of focus that we look at. From social-emotional factors to kindergarten readiness, to post-secondary success, high school graduation, and then individual plans of study. I talked about the needs assessment survey that our staff did back in 2018, 19, where we focused on relationships and relevance. We moved that to relationships and rigor. We based that on the accountability report, which is on the next slide. Every district, and you can see this if you just go to KSPE and look up accountability reports, every district has an accountability report, which is basically a snapshot of the district as a whole. So, once again, schools are not accredited, districts are accredited. Give Dr. Bearman a moment to hand that out. The KISA team took a look at this data and we identified some areas where we were doing some awesome things as a school district. But we also identified some areas that we thought we need to focus on because we don't think we were meeting our own standards at the school district. And that's why we moved away from relevance to rigor. But I'll share with you a couple of things on here. And if you go to the next slide, Dr. Bearman. One of the areas that we're focusing on more now than we have in the past is state assessments. State assessments have evolved over the last four or five years. You asked our staff four or five years ago what state assessments were. It was a process that the students just went through. But because they are more valid, because the results mean more to our legislators, to our students, to our parents, our focus now is on state assessments more than it was four or five years ago. And the data that you see on the board, the data that you see in front of you, you can see USD 416. When you compare us to the state average, we do a fantastic job in reading, in math, and in science. Social studies is doing piloting work the last couple of years. So, that state assessment won't be on our accountability report for a couple of years. But when you compare our numbers, and those numbers are all of our students that took the test. For those of you that don't know, all third through eighth graders take the reading and math test and our tenth reading and English test. And our tenth graders take the English test and the math test. Science test is taken by our fifth graders, our eighth graders, and our juniors. But when you look at that data, you'll see that we do very, very well compared to the state. The next slide talks about chronic absenteeism. This one surprised our KISA team. This surprised our administrators. When you look at our chronic absenteeism rate in the USD 416, we are almost at the state average. And if you look at the definition, percentage of students who miss 10% or more of school days per year with or without about excuse, 17 out of every 100 students miss at least 17 days of school in our district. That surprised us. And that's something that we need to focus on. And that's something that we are going to focus on. And the KISA process is forcing us to do it. But we also know it's the right thing to do.
Dave, great question. That 17% figure, what year is that? Or is that like a five-year average?
Let's go to the next slide. Last year, great question. Our chronic absenteeism rate over the last four years has increased just like the state has. Take a look at 2018, 19 in purple. 9.7% of our kids were missing about 17 days. That has doubled. Current data, when you see 20.8, that hasn't been vetted yet by the KSPE. But that is on the AMOS report that one out of every five students is missing 17 days of school for various reasons. Now, if you miss because of a soccer game or a volleyball match, that doesn't count. But when you go on that four- or five-day vacation, because it's a little bit cheaper to travel in February than it is over spring break, that counts. But usually, that's only four or five days. Where are those other 12 or 13 days coming up? Where, why are our students missing that much? So, our staff has some work ahead of us. But one of the most important things is our teachers need to work hard every day, just like they do, to make sure that the education that takes place in their classroom is so important that kids show up. Why are relationships so important? Because that relationship that a teacher has with a student might be the only reason that student's coming to school.
Do those numbers include like the kids that were gone because of like COVID?
Some of those, yes. Yeah, you'll see some of that.
They didn't want to do their, whatever, their quarantine at school or things like that.
Some of those numbers are put into play. But I direct you to 2020, 21. That was our huge COVID year. Last year, our numbers were even higher. One thing that we don't do, we, first of all, we do a great job of sending out those Sunday messages. But in all those Sunday messages that you get as parents from the principals, we probably haven't talked a lot about the importance of coming to school. I think just by putting it on the radar of some of our parents, they're going to be a little more influenced to send their sons and daughters to school.
Is there a difference in absenteeism, like grade, grade level-wise? Do we have that? I mean, do we have?
We do, but Doc, Mr. Pickman wasn't prepared for that. But that is something because of the KISA process. Because we went through the KISA process, Mr. Pickman did a lot of work on seeing that there is a direct correlation, at least at the high school level, that kids that are in schools GPA is a lot lower than those.
No, I guess what I was saying was, I'm sorry, like, do we see more absences at high school versus kindergarten? Like, do we see, like, what's that like?
It's pretty equal across the board. Yep. When we looked earlier in the year, at one point, Rockville's absenteeism rate was the highest in the district. And that's our K-12 ghettos. And you're right, you would assume nine through 12. But no, it's pretty equal across the board. And as we dig deeper into the data, we can see where each building's at with regards to not only state assessment scores, but absenteeism rates as well.
So, and another thing through handbook policy, the board, if you remember back in April, when principals bring that, you supported handbook and policy changers that hopefully helped us as well. If you recall, at the high school, for example, that the policy used to read that kids could really get 10 free days each semester. Well, that's 20 days in a year. There's 175 student days. And that's if we don't have any snow days or anything like that. So, we actually before had policy that kind of was going against what we were being accredited on. So, as you guys know, we tightened that. The other building went with that. So, we have a K-12 now policy that doesn't allow that much as well. So, Amy and Michael have to work on that at the high school with the students as well as the other buildings as well. So, hopefully, that policy change from a handbook will help get these numbers to go the right way.
What did they change it to? Seven?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely under, yeah, I guess Michael would know. So, so now it's 14 instead of 20. Well, 14's under the 17.5 days of 10% of 175 student days.
What are they allowed by the state before there?
This, no, that's global jurisdiction.
So, that is low.
So, what we do is when we have a kid in Truitt, and the Truitt laws are still in place, and that's three in a row unexcused, five in a semester unexcused, or seven in a year cumulative. Then we turn that over to the county attorney. You know, it's up to her on what happens. A lot of times, they would rather or just tell us what we're doing is probably the best thing. So, we would probably like a little more support from that level. We just don't seem to get it. And that's not just Miami County, is what I hear.
Refresh me, those were unexcused.
Unexcused, yeah. Now, this isn't, this is excused. But as far as some teeth, when we know kids are just skipping.
Sure.
It's that three, five, seven rule. And then, we hope that the county attorney will step in and help support that to get. These kids need to be in school for more than just academics, social, emotional, mental. They're not here, they're probably doing things they shouldn't be doing, so.
And this is a general statement. This isn't about Miami County. But when our high school students, when they get to 16, 17, 18 years of age, the courts really don't focus as much on the truancy issues with those students at that age. But at the middle school freshman year, you'll see some things. They've got some training programs, some family-type of counseling that the families are encouraged to take part in through the county. But if the family says no to that, there's not a lot of teeth to it. So, but we do work with our county attorney as much as we can on those type of things. The last thing that we looked at that we're really going to try to focus on is what's called post-secondary effectiveness. And this is a little bit confusing and I'm not articulate enough probably to describe it as well as the video could. But because of timing, we're not going to watch that at this time, but it is available. But real quickly.
So, I just show you, if you go to that link, and I'll send you this slideshow so you can. The State Department has put together different videos. So, if you want to know anything, but the one he's referencing is this module seven, but it's nine minutes long and we know we have a lot to cover tonight. So, if you want to know more than Dave could tell you in 30 seconds, right here, this post-secondary success would kind of go through how the state decides these numbers you see here.
So, to sum it up in about 30 seconds, if on the screen, you'll see that 95% confidence interval rate is 61.7 to 65.6%. The state has a weighting system that believes that USD 416 students, when they graduate, students 61 to 65% of our students should be effective and ready for success, not only based on what they've done in high school, but what they've done in the two years after high school. And so, part of that weighting system includes our cumulative poverty rate, which if you look at our USD 416 numbers compared to some of our neighbors to the south, we're probably not as high of a poverty school district as those. But if you look to school districts to the north, their poverty rate probably is not as much as a Lewisburg. Another thing that they look at is chronic absenteeism, which we've talked a little bit about. They also look at our suspension and expulsion rate, which in this district is very, very low. You talk to some other school administrators in other school districts, they expel kids at a lot higher rate than we do. The fourth area they look at is mobility or trans- transparency rate. Not a lot of students come in and out of USD 416. Talk to some of our neighbors, maybe in the Shawnee Mission District and the Alatha District. 24 students might start first grade in a classroom, but it might be 19 different students that end the year with that teacher. Students are moving in and out of a lot of different school districts, a lot more than ours. So, with that in mind, quick definition of what a student is considered to be a success. One, they need a student earns an industry-recognized certification while in high school. So, you've heard us talk about our CNA program through Fort Scott. If one of our students earned one of those certificates, that counts. It also counts if a student earns a post-secondary certificate. So, I like to think of the school down in Nevada, the Welding School. The kid goes down there for a couple of years. Or a kid student goes to Johnson County Cosmetology School, they earn a certificate within two years. That's considered a success. Another one is that they earn a post-secondary degree. So, if someone graduates early within those two years, we don't see that one very often. And then, the last one is students enrolled in post-secondary in both the first and second year of high school. Now, some of you remember or heard the term gap years. Whether it's after college, someone finds themselves and travel to Europe. Same thing happens with some high school kids. We'll hear kids say, we're going to take a year off. If that student just goes into the workforce and they don't go into college and they don't have a certificate with them from high school, they will not show up on our success rate. So, our students have to fall into one of those four categories to be considered a success.
And then, you see graduation rate up there. And as Dave talked about in the old accreditation model, it was how many seniors showed up in August and how many of those same graduated May. So, we had a graduating class of 100. 100 showed up in August and 95 graduated. Our graduation rate would have been 95%. You can see it's greatly changed. There's what's called a four-year. And these, you can see right here, are five-year graduation averages. Doesn't mean our seniors take five years to graduate, but they allow a five-year window, which is what this has reported. But what that means is how many freshmen are going to show up this August? They track those kids for four years. So, even if they leave us, if we have a kid transferred to DeSoto, that kid is ours in our report because he started as a Wildcat. So, if he graduates in DeSoto in four years or even five years, he or she is going to count effectively for us. If that kid that goes to DeSoto doesn't in four or five years, we get dinged on that kid, not DeSoto High School, because he started at Lewisburg. So, that is a big difference. And that's, you see here, see, it's talking about the four-year adjusting. So, they're cohorting these kids. And then, they actually give us five years. And we have some of our own, whereas Dave runs the virtual program. So, they don't quite make it at graduation time. They're working this summer. And then, once they do, they would be in that five-year cohort graduation. So, just want to throw that out, that that is a lot different than it used to be. It's a lot trickier. And we're, I guess, we're hoping we're setting them up for success, the ones that leave us. But it's the opposite as well. If we get a kid from Paola, their sophomore year, we're going to try to get them to graduate by senior year and we know we will. But actually, all that hard work for us goes on Paola's report card because they started at Paola as freshmen.
Because going into military doesn't count either, right? A success?
It does not count.
It's like there's some problems at the state level determining success. Would not, military doesn't count or kids go right into the workforce. I mean, there's plenty of people to make the world go around that go to the workforce right out of high school.
And that's why you see that success rate at 61 to 65% because they do understand that the National Clearing House doesn't take in students that go right into the military or those workforce. So, that's why you see that number. But if you go down the rabbit hole later tonight and you go to KSPE Accountability Report, you can see every school district across the state, every one of us has that report. School districts that are similar across the state to Lewisburg, Rock Creek, Bueller, Baldwin, their numbers for their effectiveness rate are very similar to ours. If you go to Blue Valley, they're going to be a little bit higher. You go to Paola, it's going to be a little bit lower.
Yeah, I'm sure I'd agree. I was saying that at the state level, that seems like.
My favorite part of graduation is when we announce the, those that are going into the military and they stand up. I mean, that is one of my favorite parts of graduation. No, they do not get recognized on this.
Yeah, there are some, or like I mentioned, that graduation, if that freshman goes to Harrisonville, then that kid is an automatic dinger for.
They go to any other state.
And grad, yes. So, that's another one. And then, the clearinghouse you mentioned, most colleges are on there. But there are some private schools, even in Kansas, that are on, aren't on that clearinghouse. So, if a kid goes to one of those schools, then they can't pull that data and see, like on that last one you've mentioned, that they go their freshman and sophomore year to that private school because they're not a member of that clearinghouse. State's working on making sure every school's in that. So, it is a work in progress on that part.
Before I leave the accountability report, Dr. Bearman, is there anything else you wanted to point out on here with regards to the bottom right-hand corner?
Well, just, and I go back so that everyone can see it in here. And it's hard for the audience to see it. But they do put our expenditure per pupil on there. And I know we're going to talk a little budget tonight. We'll talk a lot more about that. But that is something that our district should be proud of. You can see the state average, $12,868. We, they said we spent $11,439. So, we work hard on the budgets to provide a good education and obviously, very cognizant of taxpayer dollars. But you can see that is on, most of that's academic, but the state also tells districts how they're doing from a fiscal standpoint as well. Now, that's not just instructional budget, teacher salaries. You can see that is capital outlay, bond projects, equipment, debt services. And honestly, I would have to dig into that a little bit more to see how that's even formulated. But I mean, that is something that, because I believe we do well on a lot of the finances and pay and everything else and what we provide. But that's nice to show that we spend about $1,400 less than the state average. That's the state average. So, obviously, there's many districts that are above that as well, so.
And then, if you just, don't mind going to the last slide. We submitted our report in late April to our visitation team. They have already written their year-three summary. And you can see, I just pointed out four different highlights that they put in the message. So, if you can envision in a couple of years, if these type of phrases are sent to the ARC, feel very confident that our school district will get a full accreditation in 2024, 25.
Okay, and then, this other one, state assessment update. We gave a little bit, but this goes into the weeds a little bit more. This is, not that, I mean, obviously, Dave has shared assessment data before and he would have done this anyway. But out of the latest legislative session, requirement for the budget process is that state assessment data is shared with school board members. As we get in there, and as I told the board, we just opened that July 5th. So, we're still working on that. Katie, Dave and I, and Amy Van Ryn, actually, I guess, are driving to Pecah tomorrow to see Damon's dad, Dell Dennis, to kind of just see if we're on track. And I know having Katie by my side, it is on track. But she always feels better when we leave Dell's office. And from a budget standpoint, obviously, you haven't even seen much of that. That's in August and even in the September process. We have to do a little bit tonight due to state law by getting something to Janet White by July 20th. But other than that, we're just in the infancy stages. But anyway. we're just in the infancy stages. But anyway, part of the legislative session that just passed was the state legislators want boards of education to look at state assessment results and make sure that there's parts of the budget that are tied to student success based off state assessment data. And so we're working on that, um, and our principals have shared the information. You'll have in, input in that as well. We've done what's called a needs assessment, so over the buildings did a needs assessment. And then it becomes a district needs assessment because it's a district budget as well. So uh, part of uh, like I said, that requirement, but we want to share state assessment results with you anyway, because we're doing quite well, so.
Absolutely, doing well in a lot of areas and, and that's what I'm excited to share with you. This will look familiar to, to a lot of us, especially if we're parents and we have students who drive home state assessments scores. Most of our principals, they send information for you to be able to look at them online. But our state assessment is scored on a four level uh, scale, if you will. Uh, four being the highest and one being the lowest. And if you take a look, the definitions are up there, but our goal is to have seventy-five percent of our students, according to the state of Kansas, score in categories three and four. And that is a high, high task. Because if you score at the level three or four, not only are you at grade level, but you're performing at or above that grade level to be college and career ready. And so a lot of districts will look at how students score, not only their ones, but their twos. A two is not necessarily a knock because that student is at grade level at that time. It's with the level three and four and the different definitions that you see up on the screen that the Board of Education from the State Department is really trying to look at. And that again, is seventy-five percent of our students across the board that take the state assessments, score a three or a four. And that's a very, very high task, but it's a challenge that our staff is taking on. I think it's a challenge that our students are starting to take on as they understand that the importance of state assessments is greater now than it was four or five years ago. So with that, if you don't mind going to the next slide, gonna go in different order, gonna start with Broadmoor, go to the middle school and then talk to the high, talk about the high school. But again, the data that you see up there is the percentage of our students and the percentage of students across the state of Kansas that has scored a three or a four on the state assessments. And you can see that we have English, math and science up on the board. Uh, Lewisburg, it's in purple. The state is in pink. And if you start looking at numbers, we did very, very well when you compare ourselves to the state. But when you look at the students that come to Lewisburg, honestly, we should do well compared to the state. And so that's why a lot of our teachers look at how their students did the year before. From an administrative standpoint, we look at it systematically. We'll look at, for example, let's take a look at our third grade math. In two thousand eighteen, sixty percent of our students scored a three or four on the state assessment. Fantastic. But look at the growth from the third grade teachers with different students coming to them over four years. Last year, eighty-three percent of our students scored a three or a four on the state assessment in third grade. And you can do that almost in every category at Broadmoor and you can see some really great growth across the board. But then look at the pink. What do you notice with the state? Pretty stagnant.
Or down.
Or down. Kudos to you as board members, kudos to our staff, to our families, to all of our stakeholders that in night, or in twenty twenty-one, we were in school from day one. We all agree to disagree to talk about masks ever again, but we were in school and learning and teaching was happening. And as a result, while the state was stagnant, USD four-one-six was making growth. So really, that's a pat on the back to everybody in purple.
And we have a large teacher contingency here. Only one to represent Broadmoor is Ken Dolpin. You take this back with the Broadmoor flag, Ken Dolpin, uh, not today because Broadmoor is not finished, but uh, in a, in another month, uh, you take that back. But no, that's excellent. Uh, and yeah, what Mr. Tappin said is correct. And what you're able to do is to, you know, those are really snapshots of different kids, but what you can do is you can do the couple of, so you can take uh, so I'll just take like last, so last year, you know, as you look at a grade and then see the next year. So if you look at third grade and then look, take it down a year when they're in fourth grade and fifth grade, you can see that cohort improvement as well. Because if you just look at fifth grade, those are different kids every year and yes, we need that to improve as well. But you're really comparing more when you're going down and you're tracking those uh, those groups of kids. Yeah, we have move-ins and move-outs, but still it's the core nucleus as well, so uh, yeah. Great, great re- results there. And they did a lot of that through construction this year uh, with jackhammers and everything else going right beside learning.
Next up, looking at our middle school data. Again, you're going to see some growth and you're going to see some areas that we know that we need to address. We need to look at our sixth grade math and reading scores from last year. There was a little bit of a dip. What was the reasoning for that dip? Remember, this is just one day of testing though, so there's other things that go into play, but there was a little bit of dip. So we need to work with our teachers to see if there was some things in how we were pacing, how we were teaching, what we were learning. Do we need to do things to make some adjustments? But overall, there's still some good growth. The one area that I want to really highlight is in eighth grade math, if you look at that twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-one, nineteen percent of our students, we were below the state average. We had to make some hard decisions and kudos to the administration at the building level, kudos to Dr. Bearman and the school board. We made some changes and we had a new math teacher come onboard. Because she worked day in and day out with those students, because she had the relationships with those students, we got back to where USD four-one-six, eighth grade math scores belong. And that's above the state average and almost fifty percent of our students scoring a three or a four on the state assessment. So sometimes we have to make difficult decisions and if we have the data to show that we need to make those decisions, you guys have been very supportive in us doing that in the past. Um, at the high school, again, not as much data because only the tenth graders take the reading, English and math test and only the eleventh graders take the science. But you can see that there's some good data up there. It's been well above the state average, so we're doing well there. But if you notice, the Xs under twenty-one, twenty-two for math, those scores have not been vetted yet by the State Department of Education. So we'll see some changes there. Those uh, numbers should be available later in the fall when school starts. And all of these numbers for that matter are preliminary because they still have to go in front of the Kansas State Board of Education for final approval. And that's for all scores across the state. Put all the numbers together. How did we score? What is it going to look like on our accountability report? Without the math scores on there, um, excluding that, the data looks really good again compared to the state. Twenty-one, twenty-two, fifty-three percent of our students, grades three through eight and tenth graders on English scored a three or a four. Fifty-seven percent, it's probably going to be a little bit lower after the math kiddos get in there from the high school. But again, way above the state average in all three of those areas. And that's a credit to the high expectations and moreover, one of the reasons that we have to continue to focus on rigor and why we chose that as one of our two goals through the KISA process. Change, change gears a little bit, I'm going to show you what a math question looks like today. So for some of you, don't go too far back in your memory bank, but you used to take Iowa test the basic skills or state assessments or the ACT. Take a look at this question. Five friends collected cans for recycling. The line plot shows how many cans they collected. How many total cans did they collect? Enter your answer in the box. Just going to give you a few seconds to kind of look at that question. You don't need to pull out a calculator or anything like that. This is just practice. But imagine your son or daughter seeing that question and think about all the different things that go through their mind to answer one math question. First of all, they need to know how to read a line plot. Second, they need to infer that each dash represents the value of five. The students then need to organize the information into a math in addition problem and finally, they have to enter the correct answer. What happened to multiple choice tests? They're gone. A lot of them are gone on state assessments. So the student, oh, by the way, paper and pencil? No, they're using their Chromebooks to take the test. So they have to have the technology skills to then enter the correct answer. What grade level do you think this question is? Eighth grade?
I think younger. Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
That is a fourth grade.
I was like, well, we did some hard math problems last year, so.
That is a fourth grade state assessment question for our students. It's a little different. School's a little different than it was when I was in school.
They're not allowed to have a paper and pencil at all?
There's accommodations.
There's, there are accommodations, but.
I mean, generally speaking.
Generally speaking, I would say teachers, ninety-five percent at least are taking the test using their computer. They even have scratch papers.
Yeah.
But the answer they have to put in, that one oh five, they have to make sure that they're hitting the keys correctly and hitting enter and doing those type of things. But I just thought it was something to share with you, but the tests aren't what they used to be. They're difficult. Um, and what we use is the term depth of knowledge. You can just see how deep our teachers need to teach and how much our kids have to really do some critical thinking on at the end of the day, it was really just an addition problem. But they had to put a lot of different thoughts into that process. Our ELA twenty twenty-two assessments, again, four is the highest level on the state assessments. We had fourteen percent of our students scoring in level four compared to the state at eight. But if I take you all the way to the bottom, only twelve percent of our students scored in level one compared to almost a third of the students across the state of Kansas. And we are not giving up on those kiddos. When you talk about what MTSS is about, the support systems, the tiered interventions that we work with that are teachers, when they go into different groups and they're doing that group work and they're working at different levels. There's a group that would probably score a one, but they're working together so they can understand the content. So maybe the next time they take a test, whether it's a state assessment, a fast bridge assessment, or just a teacher test, that they're going to score a little bit higher on. So we focus on all of our students. In the math, that the math, thirty-two percent of the students across the state scored a, a one. Only eight percent of the students in this district scored a one. So there are fantastic things going on in the classrooms throughout the district. This is just one piece of data that we get to uh, show that to you with.
Some more to come.
Keep going, Dr. Bearman? No, I'm.
I'm heading the paper.
I know you were. Is there any questions though that I can answer?
So what will be charged with those members around here and myself and Katie is uh, how are we making sure some of our, our budget is working towards level one and two? Obviously, you've discussed some of those items even when we've been dealing with personnel from, you know, way back in kindergarten enrollment, last month on like some speech language. So you guys are already having those conversations and we will continue to have those as well. So, but that's through those needs assessments, uh, where we'll be headed in August and into September when the budgets are approved in September.
Just real quick, and I know it's probably broad because I know we've expanded this quite a bit, but and these numbers go more and more towards the three and the four. And you know, we do still have some in that one, but how are we addressing that greater span? Because if these are above and, and even way beyond grade level, how are we reaching them to make sure they're getting enriched as well as, as the people that need the extra?
Yeah, so that would be through MTSS. It's just not for the lower level. Uh, so a lot of our schools have done enrichment activities uh, and set up, whether it's during Wildcat time with the middle school or obviously the schedule that Amy and Michael are going to help with the high school. Uh, but also you've heard a lot of PLC, professional learning communities. That's actually one of the four questions that staff work on and what are we doing with the kids that get it? And so, yeah, they want to know what are we doing with the kids that don't. But one of the four pillar questions of PLCs is exactly that. What are we doing with our kiddos in this class that are in purple uh, in level four? That's all in that twenty percent. Uh, and so the staff are working on that as well. I mean, they obviously enjoy that part of teaching. Uh, uh, they're ready to roll up their sleeves on that eight percent as well. But uh, so through that MTSS and PLCs, and we just sent a lot of people to the St. Louis area, even up to Kansas City, the ones that couldn't, uh, a lot of excitement on that. So many of our professional development dollars and our at-risk dollars are going to exactly that. It's, I think at times people, damn, what are you, you're always working with the lower kids. Well, we, we have to when we need to. But I hope that no one feels like we're, we're not uh, supporting those upper level ones.
I think some good examples at the high school, and I apologize for interrupting, but when you look at some of the math courses that we offer now compared to when some of us were in school, um, we offer calculus, statistics, college algebra. On the Spanish side, we're now offering Spanish five and getting close to offering Spanish six, the uh, bi-literally, biliteracy certificate. Um, working with those kids in that area. The uh, college opportunities in sci- science, we offer two science classes for dual credit. English, our soft, our juniors and seniors can take college level. So if you look across the board, especially at that secondary level, all the work that's going on, K through tenth grade, we can really take those, that learning to the next level. And when our students walk across the stage, many of them are walking with almost AA degrees because they've had a college credit because we are working with those kids at the higher level.
Yeah, I know from my personal experience, I had some friends in, in school that they were achieving at that high level early on, but then they kind of just got bored. And so I, I want to make sure we don't.
We've expanded the gifted program. We currently have two instructors. We used to just have one. That comes out of special education fund, so even our gifted, um, and obviously you don't have to be gifted to be a four or three, but uh, we, that's another area where we've expanded uh, that program as well.
And, and working with our parents. I, I think Student Services does a fantastic job, but if there's an area that we can really focus on is convincing parents that their kids could be challenged a little bit. And so when the student says, I'm done with math after three years, I don't need math my senior year. If we can get the support at home that, no, that elementary statistics class is good for you because when you become a freshman in college, you're going to take math and if you take a year off, you lose it. And so sometimes we need to challenge our families a little bit that it's okay for your kids to struggle. Because if you don't struggle, you don't learn and that's probably a work area we need to focus on across the board with everything. Is a four-point O doesn't mean you're the smartest student. Some of our three-point O, two-point five students that work every day and challenge themselves, those are some of our best and brightest students. It just takes them a little bit longer to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four-point-two, student safety.
Uh, I was requested by the board and, and I also have an executive session, one of the seven areas that boards can go in there is an executive session on security matters. So if there's other items, uh, after we get finished four-point-two you want to talk about, we'll go in there. If you feel like we exhausted everything and don't need to, we won't when we get to executive session. I would just start with student safety uh, and staff safety. I mean, I believe we always are trying to make that at the forefront. Uh, I know what happens around our country is always unsettling and uh, I don't want it to happen anywhere, but definitely don't want any of that stuff to happen here. Uh, and student safety is broader than, of course, that. A big thing investment is what we've done at the middle school uh, with the high wind shelter. That is a safety uh, uh, investment of our community. That's probably going to be the safest place in this town if a tornado hits. Now, we can't accommodate five thousand people, so I hope everyone doesn't show up, but uh, that is a very safe structure. I was principal in that building with some of the teachers here and I knew that when we were doing tornado drills, um, um, it, it wasn't the best, or if it was, tornado is a long ways away. We'll try to get over to the high school. That's not a good uh, safety drill. So, you know, we've invested in that. We've invested in safeguards. I still believe the uh, door barricade we have on our doors is one of the best uh, safety measures out there. There are many of those. There are, you know, and maybe you've seen where like you can even put a fire hose on the, the hinge or there's a thing called a barracuda that you slide, could slide it under, a lot of different devices. I wanted a device where a teacher, hopefully it's always a drill, but if the real McCoy happened, they don't have to worry about where did that barracuda go? Where did the fire hose go? Whether a kid's playing a trick, the custodian moved it to dust or whatever. Yeah, they also need to lock their uh, door. Uh, but I also know how life is and sometimes are the teacher's keys in the cup holder of their car on their nightstand at home? So obviously the best is that the door is locked and that barricade's in place. As soon as that barricade's in place, um, now we go to the phone and uh, immediately that does the ALI analysis. It alerts lockdown and informs in a matter of, well, as soon as someone pushes in that number. So it goes to across that school, it goes to all the administrators, it goes to the police department. So obviously I immediately know that uh, Tiffany Musial has set that, Pete Proctor, the principal knows that, Nathan Bell, the police know that. Because it's important that we know where the immediate threat is in the building. And that's changed with school safety. It used to be that schools, let's have code words. So, yeah, let's say there's a popcorn party in the blink and that is telling everyone except the intruder. Well, studies have shown you don't do that for a variety of reasons. You tell that intruder, we know where you're at and the good guys are coming to get the bad guy. Also, they did research that when we have subs every day in our buildings. And subs may be, we do try to do a great job with training our subs too. But they actually found that innocent people were taking people to line of fire because subs are great. Sometimes they get the, you know, the wool pulled over them and so, oh, we have a popcorn party, let's go down there. And so it's really, you're just telling the bad guy, we know where you're at, help is on their way. Uh, so we are Alice trained and certified and so does that ALI. The C is counter. I hope no one in our district ever has to do counter. Uh, but studies have shown, don't hunker in that corner. Pick up our Chromebooks, pick up your desk, pick up whatever, um, throw it, you know, try to do whatever. And then the E uh, is evacuate and we empower our teachers. Uh, but that's why it's so important to alert. You take the high school, two hundred and now with the addition twenty-five thousand square feet. So when that goes. So when that goes on and says that it's down in the weight room and your Kimberly Peyton clear on the north side, she has the ability, does she get her kids out and run over into Summerfield subdivision or whatever the case may be? And so if she doesn't, then she hunkers down in that classroom as well. A locked classroom, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong, there's used, I think statistics show there's never been a fatality behind a locked classroom door. Teachers have been wounded or killed when they're going outside locking the door. And so we've tried to eliminate all that. The locks are in, they can lock from the inside with that door barricade as well. We also have other of those in the building in case someone's in the hallway or the restroom that students know where to go to those other door barricades to be safe in there as well. We have crisis kits, so our nurses update those, that we have those. We have a lot of reporting. Reporting is key. As you guys watch the news, it seems like, you know, always that is so important. And a lot of times our kids do do a nice job of reporting when they hear things. That's important. It's important as we teach our kids, there's difference between telling and tattling. That's, you know, telling, you're trying to help someone, tattling, you're trying to get someone in trouble. And so even at an early age, trying to tell kids the difference between that. And so, and we have anonymous reporting mechanisms as well, from the bully boxes to online reporting mechanisms to obviously the highway patrol, hotlines. We practice, so we probably can do better in that. And I know we're going to work on that. Practice makes perfect. And so we do need to probably make sure when we're doing those that everyone is on board. And but we do follow-ups with those. So whether it's, I couldn't hear that or it's not showing up on my computer, we get with Richard and IT to take care of those things as well. The state actually now requires, used to be you had to do so many tornado drills and fire drills. Now we actually have to report how many crisis drills we have as well. It's kind of sad, but and we, once again, would do those anyway, but we actually have to report that to the state. It's actually on our sheet that the state fire marshal takes a look at as well. So that's just to get it going. I don't know what else anyone would discuss or if the other items you would like to discuss are in executive session, but.
I had a question about it. Have we thought about getting an additional SRO at all? I mean, I know we have one for five buildings. And I think there was one when I was a student here and we had two my senior year, I guess we had three. And there's just a lot more, a lot more schools and a lot bigger areas. And I know that's like a city and a school.
It is, we have, yeah, we pay Nathan's half of his salary and benefits, so.
And to know if that was, or if there's studies out there that say having, you know, I just, I just wonder if the school district our size growing that we don't need more than one. I don't know.
I can look at that. I can have conversations with the city. I don't know if the board chooses to do that, if the city would entertain at all at cost carrying or if that would be fully on us to do. I know they're also understaffed, I believe. I don't even think the police department is fully staffed.
What was that question?
Oh, sorry, Jennifer asked about possibly looking at a second SRO. And I can have preliminary conversations with Chief Bauer and Nathan Lawl just to see how that would work and what the details would be on that. So Officer Bell, you know, his office is at the high school, but we do encourage him to get around to all the campuses. And with, like I said, our Alice training and those notifications, that goes to police. And being in a small community, they can get to the schools really quick when we need them. And I know anytime they have, they do get there very quickly. You know, out here, this is city property, but it's also out here. So we are kind of more on an island out here. But we put some additional safeguards in place and we can talk about some of those in executive session as well if we need to. But I can definitely look into that if that's the board's wishes. I can also see, I mean.
I think it's a great idea to explore.
And how that works now, Nathan's on the street in the summertime, he's a full-time. And so I think how they use him is then obviously give an officer's vacation time and things like that. And then when we do need him for big events or graduation football games, then, you know, he's paid overtime and we paid for that security as well.
Did we, and I can't remember, did we used to have like a watchdog program or did the other, like other schools have that where, do you know, does anybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, watchdog with dad.
We, we had it.
I thought we did, I just couldn't remember. Oh, we had it.
Rockville had it.
I thought I was, I thought Rockville had it when my oldest was there. I couldn't remember.
Yeah, we currently don't look into that. You know, we, the teammates is nothing like obviously that, but.
They're just, you know, studies do show that when there's an increased male presence in buildings, that'll, sometimes people don't mess with it too much, so. Curious about that.
I do have a question. You know, the last day of school, when you had the luncheon for the whole staff at the high school there, there was, I happened to be, had to leave early to go babysit. And when I was leaving, a man comes into the front door, walks in with nobody, of course, the office is locked. I mean, nobody's in the office. He comes in the door and goes down looking for, there was a teacher walking down there and said, I need to find my daughter's locker. It could be true, it could not be. But I stood there to watch to make sure. And he didn't, he couldn't find it, so he left. And then I think his daughter came in the door somewhere and he left. But I feel on a day like that, when all the other schools are closed and there's nobody in the office, somebody can walk in there and do anything. I think the resource officer should have been there on a day like that. I feel he should have been there watching that door because that was unprotected. That was an unprotected door. And I've never thought about it before until somebody walked in, you know, and I just thought, hmm, that, you know, that could happen very easily.
Yeah, so what, Lanny, you know, our last day, school gets out at eleven and then we have a send-off for all the staff in the commons of the high school. So all the schools come over. So we do, the kids are gone, but we do unlock those front doors because the teachers from all the buildings are coming over. So and they're down in the commons and Lanny was down there for a while. So yeah, having Officer Bell, we'll bring him a plate, but he needs to stay.
Or having meat early, eat early or something.
Yeah, you know, those are the, I honestly.
It's a little hard to, yeah.
We do a nice, I think we do a good job during the school day. I mean, there's still other items. I mean, if you think about, what can we do recess, big basketball, football games, those types of things I worry about. Not that I want to take recess away or sports, but those are a little harder to control. You know, our teachers do a great job with their kiddos and they know what to do and our kids know what to do. It's in those more unstructured times that we probably need to brainstorm a little bit more on what we can do. It's sad we have to sit around and talk about this.
Well, and I know other people have talked, we've talked to people in other districts and they applaud like that, you know, that they feel safe, you know, that we have safe, good, safe schools, you know.
I've had multiple teachers tell me from other districts that have taught here that they think that our schools are amongst the safest they've ever been.
I love to hear that. Obviously, our staff have to feel safe, our students, our parents have to feel safe. You know, if you remember to the Maslow hierarchy of needs, there's seven of them. And so you got to feel safe, you got to be fed. If your belly's grumbling, probably maybe some of yours is now. And if you don't feel safe, we're not doing what Dave just showed. We're not learning. And so we do have to take care of those and we can always do better. And obviously after drills, the teachers in the buildings discuss it. And a lot of times our teachers are the best on what ideas we can do. I know like the crisis bags were brought up from the teachers. I think Lisa, actually you shared that with us. And so we have those, so when they just put them on their back to go out and or if they need to stay and hunker down in their room for a while, do we have, you know, the, some water and some things and some different, especially if you have a diabetic kid. And so do we have some items in there that they can eat when they can't get down to the nurse's station because of the lockdown? And we have different lockdown procedures. We have a lockdown one. And so lockdown one, we want school to continue, but maybe there's a perceived a real threat outside the school building. So, you know, from an hydrous ammonia tank, a bank robber. I mean, I'm just saying, but we know in that school we are safe. And so we do obviously control access to the school, but the teachers and the students can still teach and learn. We have a lockdown two, maybe we have a medical emergency. So God forbid something happens to a student or staff in the building, we have those. We have as many staff members and students that happens. But we know that kids don't need to see CPR on someone or something. So we lockdown and we tell staff where that's at so we know no one's going to that area. Medical providers are on their way. And then obviously we have Alice. And we know when Alice happens, then that means that's for the intruder. So we have different levels as well. That's all posted in the teachers' classrooms and that's all part of the drills that we go through as well. I'll look into that SRO, report on that. And then the watchdog program as well. I know our principals are on vacation, so they're not here to share, but I don't think they would disagree with any of that.
I do have a few things.
Yeah, go ahead.
But it'll be, I want to ask them.
Okay.
Four point three, discussion board policies in pursuit.
Okay, we're going, Amy and Michael here for the two that we've been discussing, but then also the other three that we just, just for time have tabled until tonight. And if we don't get through those, we can see where we go. But the first would be the discussion, the ongoing, continued discussion at the high school on students. And if the board wishes to allow hats and hoodies, so hats on and hoodies up. Anyone can wear a hoodie, but it's, it's up. As we all know, last year that was allowed at the high school. And we're only talking at the high school only with students. So we'll stop right there on that topic. So hats and hoodies and I'll open up the floor. And Amy and Michael are here to answer any discussions as well.
Is Sarai on there still?
Sarai, you there or are you putting out a fire in Alata?
Here.
Okay. So Jennifer, just back, go ahead.
So I don't think our policy for, as far as the board policy for dress code needs to change because basically referring back to the handbook. When I go to the handbook, it appears that it has changed from last year. Is that correct? That was updated to what Holloway wanted?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to use the last one we had. I don't know if we adopt, I wasn't sure we had adopted that or if that was just part of the group of things. And then I'd also like some verbiage at the beginning. I have a little, I can email it to you real quick, but just an idea, you know? Because I think we had a pretty good one, you know, that was pretty specific. I think this one is too vague and those are just my thoughts. I'll send this to you. I also added some information for cell phones, switching that to like electronic devices. And so these are just like rough ideas. Sorry, I didn't do too soon, but I'll shoot it to you right now. And you can look at it or whatnot.
So you want the board to discuss what you're sending me?
Sure. I just think you're all sitting there. I think we need to go back to the policy we had or the handbook policy we had that was specific and not so vague, that was actually a dress code policy. Because I think that one is opened up to very vague interpretation and leaves it to our administrators to make a subjective decision on kids. I think that should be something they have to worry about on a daily basis. That's just me. So you guys can continue talking and I'll send this to you.
I agree with Sarai. I mean, I think we had quite a long conversation when Jeremy presented the updated, his suggested updated dress code policy, that we had a conversation that we were a little worried that it was going to be, it's that it is too vague. Because attract undue attention or infringe on others' rights, that's pretty vague.
I completely agree that the original one, the one that we had before that one, I liked it a lot better than this one.
I mean, now if we want to talk about allowing hats or hoodies into that, but.
And he did do, you know, he did the one survey, he was asked to do another one anonymous. They actually came, and Jeremy sent this before he left. They actually, from a staff survey, came back actually the same. So in his first one, seventy-one point four percent staff said, keep it, twenty-eight point six, no. So that was thirty-five responses, so twenty-five yes, ten no. And then he did the anonymous one, just put it in my mailbox and it was actually the same, seventy-one point four and twenty-eight point six. He had less people do it, twenty-one did that one, but the percentages, so it was fifteen and six, but the percentages worked out the same.
I'd like to discuss part of that in the executive session also about that. About that survey.
Do we, is there a way to see what it was before? We don't have that anywhere, do we?
I guess I'm just against them wearing hoodie, the hood, hoodies. But like you said, having them up or the hats in school, I'm just, I'm just, I just don't think it's right. They have those ear pods in and we're leaving it up to the teachers and administrators to try to regulate that if it's a policy where they cannot wear that in the, in the school building or in the halls or in the classroom, especially in the classroom. I'm just, I'm just not in favor of them wearing that. I just, I just think it's, when you tie into safety sometimes and other things, that a lot of these things we're going to be talking about could tie into safety also of with the way things are in these days.
Does it affect their learning on the daily basis? Does it affect their, if ours, the scores that Mr. Tappin showed us, are those scores going to change if we go back to requiring kids to wear hats and hoodies?
We, I mean, we don't, we only allow it for one year, so I don't know.
I just, this is factual. I mean, but from a league standpoint, if you include Piper, they're just leaving our league. Eight of the nine, eight to nine league schools have been allowing that. Spring Hill is the only one that currently doesn't, and I know they're strongly considering it. But the other eight, us included in that, did allow at the high school the hats and the hoodies.
You know, there's so much talk about freedom and so many types of freedom. So, I mean, are we, are we going against that platform if we're, if we decide we don't want kids wearing hats and hoodies now?
Well, I, I take it back to what I said originally, where I wouldn't, I consider the classroom to be a professional setting. I wouldn't expect to see a teacher wearing a hat or a hoodie in the classroom. And I don't, I think if we're training our, we're teaching our kids what is, you know, how to present themselves in a professional setting, allowing them to wear hats and hoodies is not very professional. And I don't think it's.
But not every professional setting is the same.
I understand that, but.
My, my professional setting and my husband's professional setting are extremely different. I could not wear a hat. But if my husband wasn't wearing one, he'd probably be the only guy in the room who wasn't. And I mean, I would, I would consider us both professionals. So I don't really know, I guess I have a hard time understanding where, what, what's not professional about someone possibly wearing a hat.
I think I have less of an issue with hats as I do hoodies sometimes. I've heard some teachers talk about how kids will just pull up their hoodies and just sink down and just try to kind of like disappear. I don't know if anybody has opinion on that. Athletic teachers comment that are here if we're not, but.
And Amy, you can jump in whenever. We're just throwing you the lines, Dan. Welcome, high school principal. Tell us what to do.
Well, thank you for having me and thank you for your vote last month. I missed the meeting, but you said yes and said, thank you. I'm super excited to be here and be a part of your community. I've been on both sides of the hats and hoodies. I was at a school for a year that was very strict. We did not allow it. And last year I was at a different school and it was.
I'm not here.
Sorry, I'm bringing up to Amy.
I'm sorry.
I think Sarai has a better speaker.
In the, in the second school, we, we didn't have that rule. And boy, it took me about a month to quit telling kids, hey, good morning. Because I was so trained on you got to take your hat and your hood off. And the, the reason for really not having a really is that building's security. If your cameras are good and you've got the manpower to be able to see really well, the security part isn't hard. We know who kids are. If your cameras aren't good and they don't get around corners and in groups, it's fuzzy and you can't see people, it's, I can see that's a danger. We chose really to pick our battles with COVID, to decide what things were really important in all schools, doesn't matter which school you were. Hats and hoodies were a priority when we were looking at what to do to survive on a daily basis. And you're right. And you're right, kids can learn whether their hats on or their hats off. Um, the snuggling down is another response to the social emotional struggles that our kids have because um literally they're hiding inside of those because there's a lot going on um just the world that we we took them through for a bit. And so that's more of a, an appreciation and understanding as not so much as a denying learning sometimes, I think. So I see both sides of it. I I would support either, either decisions the board makes. However, when we talk about relationships, that's gonna put me in a bad spot to start a school year because I think um kids are used to it and that's something that um as a school they've done. And so taking that away will probably be negative for them. And I'll, I'll be the bearer of that news for that. And so I would, I would love a year just to kind of see how it looks and see um truly what the, what the thing is. I think a lot of times when we get excited about some of these um rules and expectations, it seems like everybody's doing it. And probably when you walk the halls, there's probably not a lot of kids in hats or hoodies. But because they can, some of them do, but not all of them. Those are just my thoughts for the hats and hoodies.
On that, Amy wasn't there, but I'm looking at Jared and Michael. If you had, they just throw out a number of what she just, what do you think on a daily percentage of Lewisburg High School kids wore one of those? Was it ten percent? So out of five hundred eighty kids last year, fifty eight kids added on or not that high? Jared, whether it's in your class or Michael up the month?
You're talking about kids that did it every day?
Yeah.
I'd say, I'd say you're talking to ten to fifteen um kids that ever did it, you know, at any time. Probably with half the students did it at some point. Um, but the, I think just the comfort level was big for a lot of them. And it, the relationships were, I mean, we had some students that uh that might have been their only interaction with our administration was having to be told, or some of us teachers in the hallway. We had to be the ones telling them to take their hat off. And I'll be honest with you, I was not a fan when we made the switch. But now that we've done it and we talk about relationships, I don't want to go back because it it's not as many as we think. And we still have that control in our classroom if it is a problem. You know, we politely ask them to remove the hat. Hoodies can't be on during a test or anything like that. Then they might be sneaking in the earbuds and and things like that. But it it's still something that can be, um, each teacher can still have their own policy on it um when they're, when they're in the classroom. If it's something that's causing a disruption or, you know, if it, if it's a situation where we think that's being used in a manner that's distracting from the student's ability to learn, like if they are hiding, um, if we can't tell what they're doing, um, we we can politely ask them to remove that in the classroom.
Is it, do you see it being a problem to say, Mr. Worthington lets me wear my hat in your class, but Mrs. Terry won't let me wear it in her class and now I don't like her anymore? Like, you know, I mean, do you guys see that as a problem?
That's a good question.
To like put it at the, I guess what we're trying to kind of maybe do is not make you guys have to do an extra thing in the classroom to monitor that.
I, I think that's a good question. I don't think it was ever a situation where someone is in no hat room and this teacher's all the time hats. I don't know that any teacher ever had to ask a kid to take it off in their class, but we knew if it was something that was being used in a way to give them an unfair advantage on a test or a quiz. Um, or, you know, and that would be the hoodies more so than the hats. I don't think there was ever an issue with that.
I think that's how the conversation kind of started with us because there were maybe some teachers that brought some stuff to us about like they didn't really want to have to be the bad guy.
I also think we can use that more of the art of teaching than the science of teaching. I mean, that's, that's the choice, right? You know, the kids could say, I'm like, hey, you want to keep that hoodie? You just gotta show me that you're, you know, you're wearing it in a way that's not taken away from what we're trying to get done here. Um, and I, I honestly, most kids, they wear it in a way that's not a distraction. But I was nervous going in, I'll be honest. I, I was like, I don't know how this is gonna go. And if we get given this, what's the next thing? But I thought the kids were great.
I guess I'm, like you mentioned, a lot of the teachers, some of them anyway, want consistency where, and I would think, because like she said, some kids go in one classroom and they're told your cell phones, your backpacks, your hoodies, not allowed. Okay, well, some of them, you get some flack from some of these students. Not very much, I don't think, okay? That they do take, they do catch flack, say, well, I'm allowed to do it over here. Why can't I do it in this classroom? And uh, that's what we were, I mean, one, we, we talked about consistency because then you're putting the pressure on each teacher to do it and they don't want to be responsible. Some of them will just let them because they don't want to, don't want to mess with the issue and they don't want to be the one that has to regulate it, I guess. That's where I'm coming from is the consistency on all these things we're gonna be talking about. There's no consistency in from classroom to classroom uh on that.
I think that's where we teachers have to do the work at the beginning, at the front end and establish, establish uh policies in our room. Uh, and I think, I, I think having fifty rules is not a good way to to do it in my room. Um, I mean, you've got, because then you gotta enforce all fifty. Um, so it's more of a, you know, establishing a routine early on. And one of the big ones, I think, we as the staff need to say, hey, we're not here to compete against other teachers, like who allows what, like we all are on the same team here. Um, but in college, you know, I had professors that let's, let us do some things and others wouldn't. My high school teacher was the same way. I think it's very admirable that, that you all want to make it to where we're not being pitted against each other. But I also think that's almost impossible. Uh, because in, in the heat of the moment, a student might try to do that in a lot of these situations. But I, I guess, I, I haven't heard it. If you're here, I'm not saying that no one's talked to you about it on the teacher side of things, but I, I haven't heard it a lot. And I feel like there's a lot of teachers that were in my situation where we weren't for it, but then once we had it, we saw it worked out a lot better than we thought. And so I, I'm with uh Amy here. Can I call you Amy? This is the first time with this. I think it's gonna be a tough sell right out of the gate, um, if we, if we take it away. But I do think your intentions are good. You're trying to make it to where we're not all against each other.
Yeah, well, or you have to control what the students are doing, each individual person, it shouldn't be, it's a policy. Then it's up, it's, it's clear cut and they know what they've, they've got to do. And I, I, I did have a couple of teachers call and tell me back then that, you know, they just let them do it because they don't want to deal with the issue and try to say, okay, you're not doing it. So they're trying to do what some of the others are doing. They just, they're just tired of dealing with it and they don't like it, but they're tired of dealing with it. I, I guess what I've heard from some teachers is it goes to, it ends up being a problem. Some students disrespecting teachers because they're being told they have to put their hoodie down. And it goes back to, you know, things, I mean, I've heard this a lot from, that from teachers, especially in the high school. Especially this last year, that there was a lot of disrespect from students to teachers. And that a lot of teachers felt like they weren't not threatened, but, you know, they weren't respected. And I think if we have everything, if it's uniform, is what we're trying to say. Try to avoid that situation. So you guys, this is less on your plate, so you need to be teaching and policing. And if it's that way across the board throughout the school, then you guys don't have to worry about it. And it's not on you to, you know, if, if, you know, we're not putting it on you. It's not, we're not saying if the kids wear a hat and you don't take care of it, that's on you. And that's not stupid.
And I want to call it, I mean, I know hoodies and hats and and cell phones have been the big topic now, but most things are what we're discussing because we want to give every teacher autonomy, authority and things like that. So I pull up our tardy policy. That is up to every teacher that teaches at any of our schools to assign. So when's Jared going to say a kid's tardy to his class versus his neighbor versus that neighbor is all different? Because it doesn't say, does that mean when that kid is sitting in Jared's desk? Does that mean when the kid goes through his, Jared's neighbor's threshold of the classroom? When they're running down the hallway, say, don't give me a tardy, I'll be good the next day? And so most of this handbook gives our educators the authority and the autonomy to do their job. I know the two are, they're the hot topics, but I pull up tardy and you could take the word tardy out and put in what we're talking about and it's the same thing. As we trust our students to do the, or our teachers to do what they're hired to do in a professional manner. Nowhere in there does the board dictate to any teacher what a tardy says. That teacher is writing up the tardy slip and sending it to Michael and Amy and say, that kid's tardy. They don't question that because they treat their teachers as professionals. And Mrs. Peyton says that kid's tardy. And now they're following the consequences which the board has decided. But Ms. Peyton has decided when that kid's tardy, just like Mr. Bill Baird is gonna decide when that kid's tardy. So I just wanted to bring that up, that you could go through this entire handbook and, but it's, it's good because we're giving our professionals that we've hired some autonomy to decide when enough's enough. And then our administration supports that uh as well.
Can, can I answer one more thing? But I know no one tuned in to hear me, so I'll try to leave it this. But I, I really liked Mr. Vickery's question about, uh, when we were looking at uh results earlier, you know, what are we doing with those kids we really got? I think this change last year, like I said, I was hesitant. Appealed to students of all levels and almost all of them handled it the way we've asked them to. There were some instances where there were probably some uh disagreements between student and staff and that does put the teacher in a rough spot. But my, our kids that are handling it, you know, I feel like taking that away is going to be something that's not appealing to everyone who did what they were allowed to do last year. I think the overwhelming majority of them handled it with no problems. Um, I, I can think of multiple graduates, uh, you know, their senior year was their year they got to where they're at. And I, I think they went from, you know, being uh having a lot of referrals to having none. Um, and I, I think it would be a rough start to the school year if we took it away. Even though I think, I appreciate that you're looking out for the staff and and wanting to clean up the language, but I, I do think that the students really responded well last year in most situations. And we teachers just need to do a better job of establishing our routines at the beginning of the year to clear up.
Well, Robbie sided his cell phone and obviously we come back and there's no action. That's eventually we'll come back to these and the action items.
Do we think like that we could find what the dress code did say? I know not right now, not tonight, but like what it did say before?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
It should be in last year's handbook, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
No, because last year's handbook was not all. Correct.
That's correct.
It was kind of changed, like Amy said, because of COVID, it's when it's all changed, yeah.
I mean, like even dress code, I mean, I think it had like, you know, short shorts or, I mean, there was more, there was more specifics.
Hey, Dr. Berman?
Yes, Sarai.
So the one I sent you, so us and Spring Hill and us have the identical policy besides a paragraph prior. The paragraph prior just talked about the collaboration between parents and teachers and students as far as getting the kids um educated and being successful, you know? And that's what I kind of sent you was just a rough draft, similar to what they have. I know that most of it was identical because I've seen it with them in the past um as ours, you know? Um, I also would like to say, you know, the board didn't ever make a change in dress code here that allowed hats and hoodies. Um, I think that was just done at the high school level. I'm not sure what, I mean, I wasn't part of the board then, but why that was done and didn't fall into the board policy? I just kind of have that question to throw out there. I know we're talking about, well, now it'd be a knee jerk reaction and, you know, it'd be hard on kids, but that wasn't ever a policy. I know there's a trial done. I didn't know if that was something the board did or if that, you know, they just decided to do it at the high school level. Um, just curious on that.
Yeah, I honestly can't recall and answer that and obviously Mr. Holloway's not here. Uh, you're right, uh, it wasn't in the handbook and uh I don't know if any other board members can, um, I, I don't know how that, I just called the trial run occurred.
All I remember is uh they talked about during COVID to relax the backpack and cell phone. Relax that codes, the, the policies we had during that time because, you know, of that was the big deal. That's all I remember, something about agreed to do it during that COVID time to relax the backpack and cell phone use at that time. And that was gonna be a temporary thing for that year of COVID. That's all I remember.
But I can find last year's handbook, I can share, I mean, I'd have to pause the screens and the live link to get into my email. So uh, since I didn't get that before, I'll have to just share that with the, the board afterwards, what you sent, Sarai. Or unless you want to read, I know you kind of paraphrased it, but I can, it sounds like you want to have, got what Spring Hill has right before this. Because you are right, I do think Jeremy uh pretty much copied and pasted uh with that part we see up here uh in our current dress code uh that starts with student attire must be neat and clean from Spring Hill.
I guess my question.
Yeah, I think theirs was identical to ours in the past. And I just really liked the wording in the beginning of it, just talked about um students are expected to dress a manner that will promote a positive learning environment. Um, one function of the school is to assist students to be successful in life. Successful life, dressing for success is part of that role. So I know, I just like the verbiage. I'm not saying let's do this exactly, but it's just an idea. Um, but I also think we need to keep our old dress code policy. So it's clear and tight, especially for, um, you know, that's what we had last year. It was in the handbook last year, I think making that change, you know, um, with the new principal, I think we should stick with it and just have a level. I mean, I think our entire goal is to help the kids be successful in life and get a good education and so it supports that, so.
So if I'm hearing, are you saying allow the hats and hoodies for?
Oh, no. I don't think we should. I think we should leave it to how our policy read last year. And then add a, add a uh I, I like the paragraph in the beginning, just talking about it's collaborative effort between parents, students and the school system. So basically it just supports our mission.
Do we need, we need to have?
This is my idea, this is my thought. I'll, I'll step up.
Don't we need to, I mean, school starts next month. I mean, don't we need to decide what it's gonna say?
Well, you would, you would have an August board meeting before that.
Not before enrollment.
Not before.
Not before the handbook's distributed, I guess.
During enrollment, as far as the enrollment process, which opens August first.
I mean, me personally, I, I would say that I liked the dress code policy for last year on the hats and hoodies. I, I don't really care one way or the other.
I, I'd much rather like the verbiage that we had previous to this, this is very vague. And I, I agree with Sarai on that. I mean, it was very specific.
I'm good with the policy of last year, but I do think we should state, let them use hats and hoodies. At least let the principal kind of get her feedback after this year and go from there. Be tough for her to makes it look like she's changing rules on it her first year.
I'm against.
So do we need to make some sort of motions on that?
Well, we will on the action items when we get there. Right now, we're just in discussions about some five point two, any of these that you feel like there needs to be an actual item. So we move forward, they'll be there. Second fun one is right behind it. I don't think Jeremy put them back to back on purpose, but they're in the handbook back to back. So um we go cell phones. Um, so you can currently see what the cell phone policy, once again, we're just talking at Lewisburg High School uh is and um what the board's wishes.
I got a question, Jared. How, how well is that followed by students? And I've, I've had two high school students.
The item number two, we need, students need to be doing a better job of. And teachers, I feel like do a really good job of it early in the year. And then it, it uh, the effectiveness fades throughout the school year. But uh, we've talked about that a lot. There's really not a good reason for students to leave our classroom with their phone.
Right.
Nothing good is from that.
I guess my biggest, you know, I, I think students should, should be able to have their phone on them. I don't think it should be out there in class. My biggest concern is a student trying to catch a, you know, a teacher they don't like and rile them up and get them on video. And rile them up and get them on video or something in, in a position that's detrimental to them. That's my biggest concern with the whole cell phone deal. You know, I mean, I've seen a bunch of videos, my kids have taken, you know, during classrooms, it must, 99% of it's any, any stuff. Yeah, but I just, I just don't want to put our teachers at risk. You know, you know, how you, how you eliminate that.
Well, uh, what, what I try to do is play to the students, uh, favoritism in the back. Students very much have enjoyed that. There's some students that didn't use their locker all year, some used it a lot. But some students honestly find it very convenient to just have all their stuff, be able to go. And so at the beginning of the year, I usually ask, how many do you like being able to bring your backpack? And it's almost unanimous. I said, well, that, that's going to be where your phone goes unless we have a brain break or something that'll learn for that. Um, and, and I try to say, hey, I'm not going to speak for every teacher, but for the most part, that should be how you're doing it in every class. Now, if there's an activity where, I mean, and I usually say, hey, if you guys need to look something up, we got Chromebooks. Um, but if there's, uh, and there, there might be reasons for, but some really good activities that my colleagues have found that involved students using their phone and that might get students really engaged. I said, you, you guys know when you're supposed to be using it. So I usually just say, you know, in the backpacks where it should be.
I mean, the way it's written right now is the way I would want it. It's just me too.
I like that.
You know, I, I, I have, I'm not, I don't want to do what we give them in middle school where they're not allowed out of lockers. But because, I mean, I, the lockers, they are, you know, they're older, they should be given more responsibility. I just want to make sure we're doing what's right for you guys.
I think if it's very similar to the gray area and teacher discretion on dress code, it's this right here.
Right.
I mean, I think that's the crux and probably, you know, potentially the argument and whether it's, you're saying it's pitting teachers against each other. It's nothing else in that policy except right there. And then that brings it kind of right back to the.
Or do we change number four, put with teacher permission for classroom activity or classroom assignment or something like that?
Yeah, except sort of back to Jared's point is, uh, they got their laptops and stuff to do most of that stuff. Unless it was some, you think they could do everything on their computer.
There might be, there may be some app or something.
Yeah. I will say my son downloaded two apps for his geometry, geometry class, and I can see him because we're shared. But just for that reason, his teacher asked him to download these apps for the class. And you can't do that on your Chromebooks.
Right. That, that, that would be where I would think that that would be allowed, you know, teacher permission for classroom activity.
Are there any other high school teachers here other than Jared?
Doing a great spokesperson. See if you ever show up again.
I got the text from someone watching the video that there's a teacher that's talking too much.
We have all middle school teachers here, I'm sure. Do you guys enjoy the fact that you don't have to deal with cell phones?
I just don't want to, but we have 11 year olds. There's a vast difference between my 11 year old I teach and my senior going, he's going to be a senior this year, 17, I mean.
I think somebody said it earlier, is the age appropriateness, I think it can come down to that. Definitely don't want to speak on the half of the high school teacher.
No, no, but middle school, no, I don't want my 11 year old staff.
I, I think part of the education we're doing now is just teaching time and place and appropriateness. And some kids need that, but they don't maybe get that home. We know kids are gaming and on their phones a lot. So I think that's just part of a layer of what we're teaching in all classes, so.
I mean, I, I'm fine with the way it is right there. I just think maybe we just add it number four.
Number four is already in number one. I mean, the top number one.
Hmm.
It says without approval from a teacher and staff member.
True.
I think we allow, I mean, if Jared's speaking for all the high school teachers, but you know what, as far as, you know, letting them, um, get it, you know, like, yeah, take a brain break or something. I mean, I think that's teacher permission. If they didn't give you permission, they put it up. I, I haven't had high school kids, so I don't really know.
Well, I've heard that some, some teachers allow, or some kids put their backpacks in between their chairs and dinner and people can, or the kids or the teachers sometimes almost tripped on them. But I thought they were supposed to be, if they did have the backpacks in there, they were in back of the classroom. Are they that way?
On the back.
They're probably not in the back of the chair, under the chair.
We, yeah, we were doing the figuring out dimensions of things. Yeah, we, a lot of us had the students test out if they could comfortably keep their backpack under their desk.
Yeah.
And in most rooms, that's, it's not supposed to be, uh,
Yeah.
Where it can be locked in long ways.
Okay, uh, the other three we haven't reached, I got to, and, um, I apologize if I'm not, but I'll just, uh, the topics, I think one was on, uh, sex based material. So, um, you know, that's still an item topic and we're going to discuss all of that topic.
Is Sarai in there? She moved the phone back.
Was there anyone that wanted to discuss that? I thought that was a suggested policy topic.
I know Sarai was adding something on that.
Sarai? Okay, Sarai, did you want, are you there?
I, I do think we needed to address it. I don't know where it needs to go under. I looked at our sexual harassment. Um, just, um, you know, adults talking with minors, um, about, you know, orientation, identity, that kind of stuff. I think we just want, I just think, I don't want to open ourselves up to, um, liability there, you know? One way or the other. So I just think it needs to be in place somewhere. I don't know where to put it. Um, so.
Okay, yeah, and I just didn't even know if it was on, this topic was like sex ed. And obviously we have a sex ed curriculum from third grade to high school. Uh, but, so you're saying more on, um, having conversations with students that, uh, on identification, sexual orientation and appropriateness of that.
Yes.
All right. I mean, like I said, I, I'm, I can then visit with staff and admin and can come back with some things on that. Our teachers, I mean, all the way to their licenses, if you pull up any teacher's license, uh, there's that, the second page is all about, uh, professional ethics and standards from the state department. So obviously that would cover a lot of that, uh, but, uh, I mean, it's new ground for all of us, obviously. I mean, that's no secret, but, uh, we do try to empathize and, and support any student on any subject.
And that might, hey, Dr. Berman, that might be something we talked to, um, Glenn Mundorf about, like, hey, where would this fall in? Where would we, you know what I'm saying? As far as in our policies, if we wanted to address it? And how would it, you know, fit Boosberg School District? So.
Okay, yeah, we'll put them to work right away.
What's that?
I said, we'll put that, a law firm, uh, to work right away.
I would, I would think they would have addressed it and be, um, especially them knowing our current policies and things like that. Like it would be, I'm sure they haven't, they've already been asked that question, so.
I'm sure, I mean, I think the conversations have been like, there should only be a handful of maybe people in the building asking the kids anything about their sexual orientation or their pronoun or anything, um, like that.
Or just talking about sex basically.
At all.
At all. I mean.
I mean, obviously there's an education.
Very uncomfortable with an adult speaking to a child about.
And they need to be like guided on if they are approached about it, what.
Who they need to be talking to.
Okay, we can look at that flow chart and, and we'll report back to you guys on that one. Next one was, uh, financial accounts. And once again, these are just loose, but, um, it's been a while since I was approached with these and we tabled them, but, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, the only, the reason I put that one in there was because I had a, I'd had a parent ask me about teachers using Venmo for certain clubs and stuff. And I just don't want, you know, a teacher to get in trouble, you know? I mean, it's, I'm sure it was innocent, but, you know, they're just opening themselves up questioning by, by doing that instead of, you know, if, if we're going to have Venmo, maybe it should be to a Venmo account owned by the school or something. Um, I just, it really concerned me when I heard it because I know who the teacher is and I know that they wouldn't do anything inappropriate, but it's been questioned and I'm like, okay.
And there is a difference between, uh, a student, uh, club that they're, uh, versus like a camp now.
Right, or, or, you know, even like for T-shirts for say like the wrestling team or whatever. I, I just think it, everything, it, we, I don't think we should, the, the money should never go to the coach or the sponsor unless it's for, like, you say, camp where that's appropriate. But if it's something that, where it's not, I think that all that money needs to make, be made sure that it goes directly to the school's account. And then not to the teacher, then the teacher reimbursing the school. I just want to stay away from any, any of those pitfalls.
Yeah, and I just wanted the whole, the entire board to know, I mean, because that, uh, like camps are going on all summer. So, uh, what Coach Bonnus does, boys basketball, that's not a school sponsored. Ty has to actually go out and get his own insurance, just like an LRC group or anything. And so that money does blow right to Coach Bonnus still. Uh, and so, you know, I just wanted to remind the board again, there is that difference. That's not governed by us. Uh, that's solely on, uh, those coaches to have those camps. And so money on those, uh, specific items does flow directly to that coach. Uh, now when it's, uh, school, when, you know, approved fundraiser or other things. So like, you know, when Coach Bill Baird is doing a wrestling shirt, then obviously that's going through Mr. Pickman and Sharon Murphy's, the high school account, so.
Right. I mean, I know, and people tell me Venmo, you know, I don't have a Venmo, you know, I'll just write you a check.
Yeah.
You know, but, um, I know it's, it's simple and people get, you know, convenience, sometimes you can fall into pitfalls and I just don't want to see something happen because.
And I'd have to look at Venmo a little more. I don't know and.
I mean, I'm assuming the school could, could have a Venmo account.
District could.
Yeah, Katie, take a look at that with the auditors and, uh, see what, if we can, uh.
I do know it's been a big topic lately with schools. Um, a lot of them aren't, so you're using it. Um, just, we have gotten that from our emails with KASB, but it's been a huge topic and.
Is there reasons they're not doing it? Kind of like that they gave you?
Uh, I think for us to receive money like that at any level, we really want to be able to track it from a housing standpoint. In a Venmo account, we're probably at this time, a lot of districts are finding that it's just not giving us that ability to be able to track that money coming in and, and going out especially. So as far as I know, everybody likes the idea of it, but the reality of it right now is that somewhere a lot of districts are moving.
Well, and isn't there's like a cap, right? Like $60 or something?
Yeah, you have to have, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and we maybe can look at how we do Skyward. We allow, so maybe that's a way we can expand Skyward and RevTrack. Uh, people go on there and pay, uh, lunch fees and others. Um, now there is a fee associated with that, so that's. But if it's for convenience, because they don't want to write a check or go see Sharon Murphy at the high school and pay cash or send cash with their kids. Uh, yeah, and we don't make money on that RevTrack charges us, just like a credit card. So we just, you know, we, we eat that, uh, cost from RevTrack during enrollment. Uh, and then we turn that back on during the year. So if you've paid your kids' lunch throughout the year, you know, you're paying that little service charge. But that's just passed through from RevTrack. But man, maybe we can look at expanding what we currently have, so our coaches could just work through Skyward to update that, work through RevTrack.
And just, just to play that thing, there is an accounting handbook at the district level and then also at the building. For each of the building secretaries, there is a guideline that's given to us by the state as far as what money that we can, how we can take the money in and how it can be spent. So we can revisit that just in case there's some kids are pretty cut and dry.
Go ahead, Lanning.
Oh, uh, but the activity funds, like the cards and stuff they sell and stuff is still being turned into the school.
It is, and part of the fundraiser. So I would take football and that's, I know Drew, uh, when he sent that fundraiser application, he sent me the detailed items of what Coach Evans did when I used last year. Next year Drew will send me his own. As part of, we, you know, we revisited that fundraising application.
Right.
And those all go through Mr. Pickman and Ms. Murphy. And our auditors, when they come in in September, then they go and spend, you know, high school, that's a small business. There's lots of money that goes through the high school. Uh, and then Sean Gordon audits the high school as well. So, and that's in our audit. We actually, you get the district's audits, but you also get all the billing accounts. A little easier at Rockville, but high school, they do spend more time there.
Uh, but how do you, how, how are they getting checked? They would check that, uh, you know, we've had some problems in the past with, uh, the reporting of this and the accuracy of, uh, a couple of those. Uh, how are those checked, uh, by whoever's in charge of those funds?
Well, I'd say, I mean, we're, we just are more in tune to it. Mr. Pickman is even that, you kind of brought that up even in the, like Mr. Hinkle's last year. So Scott was working on that. And now Mr. Pickman has, I mean, I don't know if you want to say anything, Michael, how you are reassuring that those fundraisers, especially when it comes to activities are used for the right reasons.
Yeah, all the requisitions for anything that's been out of billing account, I spent my first two years making sure that all things got moved in house accounts. So now all fundraising is in, it's a big account. Anybody that does fundraiser has an in-house account that we monitor. And, um, thanks to Skyward, it's pretty easy to know. This is what this is deposited and we can track every expenditure down at Penny. And it tells us if they have the money, they don't have the money. As far as keeping track of what's brought in, uh, one thing I'm adding this year, um, we bought some, um, it's kind of old school, but they're going to write out receipts to people that are paying cash, checks kind of track themselves. So we're not going to make them do that for checks because we get, but, um, any cash transactions, we're going to ask the sponsors to maintain, maintain that and then give the book back to me. But then I'll have all those and then I'll maintain it. We'll give the book back the next year. So that's something that, that our coaches meeting and sponsoring being, we'll discuss that, that, that aspect.
Because some were, or some that were wanting cash only in the camps and stuff and, and some of that. So, but on the ticket sales and stuff, do they report to you how many tickets, what their expense was for the selling of the tickets and what they proffered it off of it? So that's where we ran into a problem before.
We're talking like the card?
Like we have the cards, uh, cards when they sell those, the exactly, okay, here's what it costs us for the cards, here's what we made off of.
Uh, I can get an expense report and that's what I've asked for, for the, for the football cards and they track, they just how many cards we gave your students, this is what we got back, here's what was brought in. And if that mon, amount of money that the company says doesn't match the amount of money that was deposited, we have an issue, uh, but it's matched.
And that football card thing is really hard to track, believe me, because I got a high schooler and he sold 75 of them and his money did not match his cards. So dad had to kick in, you know? They're selling cards that they don't have, you know, because they haven't gotten them from the coach yet. So I, I, I can see where there could be a discrepancy there.
Oh, rock star. I put a 20, the mandatory. I did like it this year though, um, they have changed it, like Drew only gave them like 10.
Yeah, at a time.
So, at a time. So it made him kind of a, they turned it into money. So I thought that was a little bit better system than before he gave him another 10 cards to sell. So I thought that was a little bit better.
So I think we continue to put safeguards in place based off feedback from you and others and, uh, we'll continue to do that when we hear those.
I guess one thing I have related to that, did you check, you know, I asked you about me being on that account.
And that was fine. Yep.
It's fine.
Yep, I did check with Sean on that one.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, just for several reasons, that's different money. Right? So just sorry, when Jim's on the Friends of Football, and so Jim just asked now, I mean, he's been on that forever and now he's on the board, can he still be on that? And he actually has check writing authority. Sean Gordon set us upon different accounts. And then also you guys have two signature checks.
Yep.
And so you just can't write it. You're going to have to have someone else. So, just like we have two signature checks. So, yep, I did check on that one. So, okay, we'll check on how we can do better outside of Venmo, uh, obviously on that one. Then I had final one, executive session follow-up. Once again, I don't know if the wording's right, but something with executive session.
I think that was just.
I don't know. Is Sarai there?
Sarai?
Um.
Do you remember what that one was?
No.
I think it had to do with just if we, if we had a, an executive session where we had personnel issue that we had a, that follow-up. As far, so it's, it's didn't just end there. So that we got an update on, you know, someone's put our improvement plan or something like that.
Yeah, the only way we do that is with the next meeting. We'd have to go in the next session and discuss personnel.
Right.
Or that topic.
You know, and I don't know if it needs to be done the next meeting or, you know, two months later or, or, you know, you know, or three months later. Two months later or, or, you know, you know, or three months later. But, you know, just so this, just, you know, we spent all this time in executive session on this. You know, are we getting resolved, I guess?
Sounds good. All right. Are there any others? Those are the ones I had, but policy procedure. And we'll bring them back up here at five point two. We'll move on to five one. That's right.
Uh, approved organizational items.
Uh, so this is a routine July, uh, organizational, uh, task for all two hundred and eighty-six districts in Kansas. And so, uh, we just will go through this, uh. When it's referencing one of the, uh, resolutions, uh, they were all in the board packet right here. So, um, and, uh, if you have any questions on those, you can let me know as well. But we'll start at the top. Uh, the five point one just shared that, uh, you have agreed to have your board meetings the second Monday of the month at six o'clock. Here are all the upcoming ones, including tonight. The only one that is asterisk and it was the same this year. Uh, spring break, uh, if we have it second Monday, that'll fall on the second Monday, March thirteenth will fall on the Monday of spring break. And so it's to push the March, uh, twenty twenty-three board meeting to March sixth. Uh, we did that this year as well. Probably March seventh if we were off a day or maybe it's March fifth. I don't know which way we've moved in the calendar. And obviously it talks about, oh, you guys can have special board meetings, uh, as well. So. Eleven of the twelve are on the second Monday except March of twenty twenty-three. Then we get into board committee assignments. So these are who were on these. Um, the calendar committee and why, uh, especially Doug Shane, who, uh, was off at Christmas time last year. Uh, that was actually the calendar committee who meets and actually approves that in November. So, uh, that's why Doug's name's still on there because when. Joe Aaron, uh, took over for Doug, that was already taken care of. So, uh, but we do need, and at the end of this, if you had time to look at it, there's a little, um, information on each of those. So, uh, with the calendar committee, we meet with the teachers, um, and a couple of board reps and we go through it and then really even ultimately bring it. Calendar to you. We try to have that approved by November, December at the latest. Uh, so we start in that, well, probably early October or so and, uh, teachers on the committee, then go back to their buildings and get feedback. And we come to an agreement on the calendar that the board approves. So we would just need. Typically, we've had two board members a part of that. We meet after school. Usually we have district meetings at Rockville. We have meetings at Rockville because they get out of school fifteen minutes later. So it just helps get staff members. Home and put their feet up earlier. So if we had it at another building, then obviously delayed and get a travel time with Rockville getting there. So we usually have district meetings in the Rockville library. So anyone want to serve? Obviously those are both open because John Peyton and Doug Shane are not members of the board anymore. So any volunteers on calendar committees?
I do the calendar.
Okay.
I'm like you.
Okay, so we have Sarai and Jennifer, anyone else? Do we have more? We can't have more than three or it's a board meeting, but, uh. You two are good with that. We'll go with that. Technology committee, uh, they work with, uh, Richard and, and Dave on, uh, technology and our teachers are on that too. So really it's, it's to discuss what technology needs and once our teachers, uh, desire, what technology concerns we have. Uh, work through that committee ultimately coming, especially if it's a purchase, um, on what, um, you guys would be purchasing for our staff. Uh, talk about professional development opportunities, student engagement when it comes to technology, all those things. So Jacob and Rob has served on that.
I did good.
Okay. If you didn't hear that, Jacob and Rob are still good. Uh, negotiations, uh, so last year Jim and Sarai, uh, volunteered right away. I don't know if negotiation scared them. Uh, Rob's been on negotiations for a while. Uh, many of the teachers are here tonight to serve on there as well. Uh, we use a program, uh, negotiation strategy called IBV interest-based bargaining. So it's really no lines in the sand. The teachers, uh, discuss their concerns and issues and once the board does together and as well, and together we come up with, uh, uh, resolution on those. And, um, so typically, uh, you know, it just depends on the year, uh, I would say two to four meetings. Uh, the goal is always try to get, uh, negotiations wrapped up by May. So not just our teachers, but all of our hourly staff and everyone can go home in May with a work agreement or a contract in hand. If it doesn't happen, it's okay. We've been in the summer before, but, uh, typically those meetings are out here and like I said, about two hours, two to four meetings. Once again, very similar to calendar, teachers meet with the board and they go back and meet with their teachers and say, hey, these are the items that. Uh, we brought to the board that they agree with or we're kind of, you know, discussing and then, or these are the items that the board might to talk about and hopefully come back with, um. Positive resolution. So has Jim, Sarai and Rob on there?
I'm good with staying on.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Negotiations are open meetings. So, um, you know, that's something that, that I mean, they are subject to call mine open meetings. Anyone, uh, can attend those. Um, no one ever does, but they are. Then we have the site councils. So, uh, Rockville is Jacob, Broadmoor is Jennifer, the middle school is Lanny and, uh, the high school is Joe Aaron. So. Any changes or wants or on those site councils?
Stained.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Sounds like we're good on all those. Um, those meet quarterly. Uh, if you're curious how site councils came about. Mike Hayden, the governor of Kansas was the one in the nineties that said Kansas needed, uh, site council. Sorry, there's my little history lesson for the dice. So thinking like ninety-two or so, Mike Hayden said that Kansas schools needed site councils. Uh, then we have the different scholarships. So Lanny, you served on that one. Obviously that goes with the endowment association and, um, are you okay with that one?
Okay.
FFA and working with, um, we used to say Mr. Morgan, we're still saying Mr. Morgan, but now we have a second, uh, young man out of K-State, Mr. Irons, Hirons? Hirons, uh, that'll be with Jim on that one. So we'll have a new guy, uh, working with Jim and I don't know if Jim and Rob still want to sit on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then the endowment, Lanny, you were on that one? Okay. All right, we'll get those updated. Board appointments, uh, that hasn't changed except, uh, with Gwen Mundorf, uh, as our, uh, local attorney. That's not anything with the K A S B. I mean, that's just, uh, that would be an attorney that we would use, uh, whether we continue, uh, with K A S B or not. And we are gonna, our goal is to get this fixed by next meeting. Right, Richard?
Right.
Uh, then these resolutions, we have to do these every year. So I did not write these. Every district owner is doing these. Um, and instead of clicking through them, I can, but I'll just, uh, so home rule is really gives local school boards in Kansas, we are a local controlled state. And not all states are. So what that really says is that local school boards have home rule. They, what you seven decide can be different than other schools. And, uh, so that's what that resolution for tonight is. The next two are, are required by the state. Uh, you rescind all your policy actions and then tonight you adopt all those. That's just Kansas law that, so it doesn't mean that any of the policies that went away last year, but you have to say, all right, we're done with the fiscal year. And now we're adopting all of our current ones because every school year is a different fiscal year. So that's what. This rescinding policy actions and write back, uh, as current written policies. Our depositories, uh, so our banks in town and where our schools and district, uh, do bank, uh, some of you may recall as far as the district where obviously most of the money. Is, uh, the district did bid that out, uh, about three years ago, I think. And, uh, the first option did come back, uh, with the, uh. The best interest rates and everything else. And so if that is ever, uh, for discussion, you can just let me know if you feel like. There's a certain timeframe you want us to send down RFP to the four local banks, uh, or whatever the case may be. But, uh, we do, um. That's where those accounts are. First newspapers saying truancy officers, um. We've added Ms. Van Rie to that. Food service even, uh, we're still going with OPA. Karen obviously is still our employee and she's still involved in those. In fact, she has to be, um, OPA can't do some of these things because that's confidential local information. So Karen will still work through that. So none of those have changed. You can see through, um, all of those things. Uh, the petty cash has not changed. So our buildings have five hundred dollar monthly petty cash allowances. And the district has a thousand. This five point one point six, um. Even though we do call a special board meeting at the end of June, uh, so I can show you the cash balances. Many districts don't do that. I just think it's important. That's not a requirement. If you guys don't want to ever have that meeting, that's fine. This resolution allows Katie and I to close the books, uh, and obviously do some of the, the things that we are. We have to do in school finance in Kansas. So for example, we did not get our last state aid payments for June. We got those after the fourth of July. And so we know what's coming. Katie knows to the penny what the state's going to give us, but we've. Technically closed our books and haven't received even all the money from the state department. So that allows us to, uh, by you guys adopting that, that resolution. Um, as well, so. Uh, accounting principles. So, um, we, uh, have obviously our accounting principles. So policy G A A P. Uh, makes us, uh, follow the different accounting principles. John Gordon then comes in and makes sure that we indeed are doing that. The one thousand one hundred sixteen hour school calendar. I know many people think the schools have days. We don't have days. We have one thousand one hundred sixteen hours. Uh, we went to school fifteen hours a day. We could have a lot less school days. Uh, Pleasanton, for example, they don't go that long, but Pleasanton goes to school pretty much, uh, Labor Day to Memorial Day because their school day is longer. Uh, there are some schools, I don't know, right around here, but like take Drexel, but I don't know how many hours goes where he has to go to school. They don't have school on Fridays, but their days are longer. So. I'm not saying we do any of that, but a lot of people think it's days. It's actually hours that equate to days. And we have to keep track of that every week. Uh, Jenny and Katie work with our billing, uh, secretaries on that. So when we have a snow day. That goes out, even though we're in school roughly eight to three, we don't get to count seven hours a day. Lunch doesn't count some passing periods. So roughly it's about a six hour and twenty minute or so, four thirty, about six hours and twenty, I think is about what a school counts every day. Um, so we do have obviously a little buffer. So when we have snow days, uh, on there, schools have the option of doing one or two things when it comes to this. Either you do what we're doing tonight or in the calendar, during the calendar committee review, schools will have to designate. Exactly what days are school makeup days for snow days. Not many do that, uh, some, but that is your options. Uh, that's, um, or you just go over and then hopefully we don't have to make up those, uh, snow days. Seniors are the only exception. They get thirty hours less. So seniors are required to go to school, uh, ten eighty-six. That's why graduation can be a little bit earlier for them. Uh, but that is serious, uh, that we do have to keep track of that. What the states, um, when they come in and audit and that's our second audit, that's our student count audit that our auditors come in. Uh, if you did not hit that, they would cut your state aid by that percentage and, uh, there'd be a new superintendent. So, uh, we will always hit one thousand one hundred sixteen hours. Uh, so, you know, if you missed one percent, uh, you're going to get cut one percent state aid. So, uh, not, not a good thing at all. So. Luckily we have Google Docs and spreadsheets that our secretaries keep track of that at all times. So we had six snow days this year. Uh, we were very close, uh, uh, because then you got to think of the other things that happened. We allow our kindergarteners out two days at Rockville. Uh, so we had no more time this year. We would have had to figure out, do we need our kindergarteners? In fact, there was one year, I think we actually had our kindergarteners had to come to school because, uh, we just didn't have enough time. So it's roughly about six days. You also don't want to get into, oh, sorry seniors, we told you you're graduating that May. But now tell your parents and your grandma, you're graduating the next Saturday. So, you know, it's kind of both ends for kindergarten to seniors and watching that. So just never know what mother nature's going to do to us. I don't necessarily not call school up because of that. Obviously school safety is the number one reason and then we worked that out. I don't think I'd ever be in favor of adding more days to a calendar. If we had a treacherous winter, we had ten, twelve days. What I'd probably do when the dust settles and here we're in April and we know we're not going to have another snow day is how many minutes to each day do we need to add? So if we had ten minutes, five before and after, so it doesn't really cause parents and working a lot of big, big issues. Does that give us in the hours to hit that requirement? I mean, that would be my recommendation. Obviously you could add some days and if you would choose to. The mileage reimbursement, we try not to have a lot. Uh, it did go up, uh, the two and a half, the two and a half cents it was fifty-six, obviously a no-brainer with, with gas prices going up. We try not to do a lot of that. We have a good fleet. So, um, we, in fact, it's in our policy that staff members do not get mileage reimbursement unless. They ask for a school vehicle to go somewhere and it wasn't available. So, uh. Honestly, the only people that usually do mileage reimbursement in the year are nurses, uh, and a little bit of Stacy Schaefer and Vitee. Um, other than that, we don't, uh, there's not very much on that. Uh, we talked about building activity funds, uh, so that policy actually discusses, uh, building activity funds, BAF, and then destruction of records. So there's, uh, policies on how long we keep records, what we destroy. So we have shredders come every year. But there's certain things we never destroy and there's other things that financial records need this many years, staff members, student records, food service. I mean, there's a whole list of things that Katie is aware of and we know when the shredder comes up, what can go and what can't as well. So. And I can, like I said, I have all those resolutions. I sent them all to you. If you need to look at any of those, but, um. By approving that recommended motion, you're approving everything on this list.
I move to approve the organizational items and resolutions as presented and discussed.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded through the organizational items and resolutions as presented, discussed. There are any further discussion?
Antisto?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studerville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Uh, let's see, five point two, approval of new board policies.
Okay, so I knew we would be discussing some of those and then if the board's wishes were to alter, change or anything, it would take an action item. So, um. Guess the floor is yours to, or someone's motion to. Move to change, alter or do anything with those so we can move forward.
When there are a couple of things on that, we do that at the end, the executive session about that. About, that was when we discussed.
You wanted to talk about executive sessions, so.
Or something here.
That's fine. So.
We do that at the end. That's everybody too.
So hats and hoodies, you want to wait till after executive session?
Oh, it doesn't matter. Well, if we're going to prove maybe we should discuss it now. I don't know. It doesn't matter to me when we do it.
Well, if you're wanting to discuss something, then it needs to wait on that topic. But if so, if there was something. It didn't sound like we needed any action on the last three, but I guess it'd be more the first two. If there's need to be anything on student cell phones. And it sounded like you want to talk about something with hats and hoodies. So that one specifically would have to come after executive session. So I guess really the only one on the table right now would be if there's a motion to change, update or anything on the student cellphone policy.
I think it's fine, in my opinion. It's fine the way it's written.
Okay, I don't know if you heard that, Sarai, and, uh, but everyone, I mean, who spoke up in here? Everyone said they're good with the cellphone policy as written. I don't know if you guys wanted anything.
I understand.
Go ahead, Sarai.
Sorry, yeah, I heard someone talk.
It's your, the floor is yours.
Oh, okay. So my, my only thing was that we need to expand, um, the cellphone just to be electronic devices and have a disclaimer on that, whether that's. E-readers, AirPods, all that, you know, yeah, just curious on it.
And as you're talking, I'm looking through real quick. I don't have any of these memorized. I know other schools will have what you're discussing about. Electronic devices. I'm seeing if the high school has that. I'm just looking at the table of contents. Uh, or do you know, Mr. Pickman? Because I don't expect Amy to have it memorized yet. Do you have what he's discussing? Other electronic items spelled out?
No.
Oh, right here, I guess. Portable portable communication. Let me see, did that go into that? Portable communication devices. Maybe it's more down. No?
So Sarai, Sarai, are you saying just instead of the word cellphone, that it just says electronic devices instead of the word cellphone?
To the cellphone policy, electronic device policy and it falls under that same, you know, just, and then what, put in there what electronic devices. Um. I sent you that. I said, sorry that I just. I sent you that, I sent that, sorry that I just sent it to you tonight, but.
And I know you're not, I'm looking at the table of contents, and we all are here, Soraya, it does say in the, in the policy uh in the table of contents, cellphones, portable communication devices, what it doesn't do is then when we go to page thirteen, do what you're asking, define.
Yeah, I think the one I read that I liked is that electronic devices, examples of electronic devices included but are not limited to cellphones, smart watches, smart devices, e-readers, portable audio players, earbuds, et cetera.
Point, I mean.
I, I'm just asking because.
Smart watches, they can do pretty much anything on them, just like a phone, if I didn't think about that. You don't wanna tell Katie you can't have a watch. You know, I like those, like, can you tell Katie you can't have a watch on, but I mean, you can, I mean, I can text somebody off my phone, my watch right now.
You wanna ask her to go around the room and.
I just didn't know if we need to clarify that, there's more and more electronic devices that you can utilize and text and all that kinda stuff, or be engaged with, and not, you know.
So Amy and Michael, you okay with, let's expand that, I mean, either, because I actually honestly see there are one or two things we need to delete uh the cellphone. Because as I go to page thirteen, I don't see portable communication devices, or we need to define that, which is what Soraya's asking.
Yeah, and we have kids that bring gaming systems, like switches, very rarely, but they do have um earphones, of course, smart watches. I mean, it's like anything, it's placed on an educational destructive basis, I mean, it's get ahead and switch out during class, I'm guessing they'd be told to put it up, and no one would say otherwise, but we need a policy to establish that.
Okay, so we will work on adding examples of electronic communication devices to here, so it'll match the table content. Okay?
Somebody to go ahead and say, just to make changes to the current cellphone use. Section of the.
I'm moved to update handbook policy, cellphone use to include electronic devices. To reflect the table of contents.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and approved to update the cellphone usage portable communication devices in discussion.
Antisto?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studaville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we have any other policies that we need?
Besides the hats and hoodies, we'll come back after.
The hats and hoodies, we'd already, I thought that was somebody.
I think, I think Lanning was just wanting to talk about. The survey.
The survey, okay.
He wanted to add an executive, but you're gonna have to add another one after coming back out.
I thought someone did mention hats and hoodies.
Did, did you wanna talk about it, anything, an executive question at all about that, about hats and hoodies?
I thought you'd mentioned maybe, like, on the security issue.
Well, I, yeah, yeah, that's already, we already have.
We got the security part of it.
Okay, so then, what you wanna talk about?
Is, is, concerning to cellphones, we've already approved it, but I'd just like to clarify some things.
So then, okay, so you don't need to, anything you wanna talk about hats and hoodies won't affect a vote on it, on what the board wants to do.
No, 'cause I think what Jude said is, we weren't, you didn't want them, right?
What?
No, I think what everybody was talking about on the hats and hoodies, we were gonna change our policy back to what it used to be, right?
Well, some hats are gonna have to make it.
Yeah.
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 For me, I personally like how we have it, I like leaving it to teacher discretion.
You like this dress code policy?
Yeah.
I personally like the old dress code policy, but I'm fine with it being allowed to have hats and hoodies.
I'm, I'm, I'm all same lines, because I don't wanna put Amy in a bad situation, for my own, your principal. You know.
I, I can't quite hear what they're saying.
Okay, uh I'll recap that, and I apologize, maybe Joe Aaron couldn't hear either, so Jacob is okay with uh what Jeremy presented to the board in April, what it says, uh. Uh, Jennifer Goodman mentioned about maybe going back to next year, but still allowing hats and hoodies, and then Jim was just saying um kinda what Jennifer was saying, and allow Amy get her feet on the ground, work with the students, staff, and parents for a year, and then discuss it next year.
I, I, but I think we need to clean up the language, I, I think, but we need to go back to our former language.
Yes, I would agree.
Cause this is very vague.
Yeah, I like our old policy better myself.
So, can I make a motion on that?
Absolutely.
So I, I move, uh I motion to go back to our previous school year's dress code policy, but allow hats and hoodies.
At teacher discretion.
Yes, at teacher discretion.
You're gonna need to recap that for us.
So, what Jennifer said?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so she, she made a motion to go back to last, not, so the twenty twenty-one school year's policy, uh but also allow hats and hoodies at teacher discretion. I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to revise our dress code back to the, was it twenty twenty-one? Twenty twenty-one dress code, with the exception of allowing hats and hoodies at teacher discretion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Second, any discussion?
I'm, I'm not in favor of the hats and hoodies, but take your vote.
Yeah, initially I wasn't either, but I see Amy's stance with being the new administrator, coming in fresh, I mean, it, obviously, this was started when Jeremy was here, and I was more than willing to, I mean, I was ready to change it back, but I don't wanna put her in, in a bad situation, so. I'm gonna vote for it, so.
Right. Antisto?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Studaville?
Yes.
Vickery?
No.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Are there any other before we move to five three?
Uh, five point three, approve approval of U S D one six chain of command.
Hey, this was uh brought up actually by uh uh board members, uh which I applaud, uh you guys looking for ways to help with the lines of communication, and I see that will say before we publish a curriculum instruction assessment, C I A, I don't quite have that right there. Uh, but as obviously things come up in the year, and you guys are informed of things, uh teachers, coaches, sponsors, administrators, how we can work with our parents and community on appropriate ways to handle situations, uh obviously at the lowest level. And so, on the left side, you see the different areas of concern, activities, athletic, huh, when the screen come back, facilities, curriculum instruction assessment, discipline, facilities, general concerns, guidance, maintenance, nutrition services, special education, transportation, and then where they start. Spring Hill has a similar one, uh one item I did change, I, and I know Soraya, you brought me theirs, and I appreciate that, was I added uh this local board rep, uh because uh not to keep Jacob out, he's at large, anyone guess can talk to him, but you guys do represent uh a section of the community. In fact, I hear that a lot, which I kind of appreciate, that you'll say, one of the community members that I represent reached out to me. Uh, and so, instead of going right to the entire board, uh when it gets to that level, uh take, I mean, Jennifer, where maybe after they visit with me and they necessarily still don't like it, be sudden, before they send an email to all of you or show up here, they at least have the opportunity to visit with Jennifer, uh maybe she, her and I can problem solve and work on that as well, so. I know we used uh Spring Hill's as an example, uh I did add that, so I just thought that would be a nice uh kinda next step, but if you don't like that.
I like it.
We can strike that, but other than that.
Can we, can we add one more line?
One more area of concern?
Yes.
Of what, yeah, what?
I, I don't know how you would phrase it, I guess, maybe if they have an issue, their line of communication, before they get to the. You follow what I'm saying?
Or does the, does the staff have a separate?
Again, do they have a separate, do they have something?
I think this is a parent advocacy line of communication, what this one is.
Yeah, and I mean, they're, they're, I mean, I have to look at personnel.
But I mean, it's based for one six lines of communication.
Okay, and we can maybe add what Soraya just said, so it's more of a parent uh advocacy, or uh but staff, I mean, there are policies that uh there to follow, and I mean, and I'd have to look at those exactly, I imagine there's.
Cause I've had staff reach out to me directly about things, and I've asked them, I said, well, have you talked to your principal? Well, no, well, that, that needs to happen before you come to me. You know, I mean, and a, a, a lot of us have, so.
I think, I think we have some of that language, uh whether it's in the master agreement or in policy on the personnel, um I can look at that and see what we have, and so it maybe doesn't change this, but I can look at that to get your answer.
I believe it's in both classified and. I know it's in those.
Okay.
But I can get that for you, Jim, and the rest of the board on personnel, I mean, there's, you know, there's grievances and concerns, uh and the appropriate steps for that.
Sure.
I can bring that, that lines. So would we like to change, I mean, I just called it U S D four sixteen lines of communication, do we need to change that? And where this will probably, I mean, obviously, we will share this uh on our website, in the parent resource tab, and uh we can have our, our principals send it out as school starts. Um, I, I honestly think this is good for everyone, including the seven of you, uh that you could be consistent, and so uh and feel supported as this document, if you're gonna approve it, that when, I mean, now you'll have it, and you can go back, and so what Jim is telling a a parent, uh Rob is telling the parent as well, and so you don't, I mean, you're not pitting yourselves against each other, you now have this, and you're following this top. So if they, if it's discipline, and so you're looking at that, and Jim tells a parent on the phone, well, did you talk to the teacher? Well, I did that, well, then now Jim knows, well, did you call Mr. Pickman or Mr. Hinkle, and I did that, well, you know, so you just kinda walk down that line, and uh I would think it would be a good resource for, for you as well.
I think this is a great tool.
Yeah.
I, Soraya, I think it's awesome that you brought this to us.
I guess the only thing I would say is sometimes, let's, let's use discipline, for example, I might say, have you emailed Michael or Ms. Van Reed, like kind of like that, like a collective, like not assistant principal, and then the principal just kind of like, did you reach out to those two, that one of those two people? You know, not necessarily hit Michael and then hit Amy.
Michael, you are in charge of discipline at the school.
Well, I guess just pick that line, but any of the lines.
And then saying, Mr. Hinkle's gonna handle probably more of that middle school, obviously elementary, his plumbing and Miss Apple, so I guess.
I mean, I guess, whatever, it's fine, I mean, I think it's good.
I think it's a great resource.
So do we go, do I need to change the title?
Oh, I think it's fine, it's kinda hard to read the purple, or the black on the purple.
Okay.
Area of consti- like, I think that should probably be white.
Yeah.
And then maybe lighten your gray boxes. So, sorry, those were just outside of things, it's hard to read on the computer.
Yeah, that's why I never get to pick out the color of paint at my house.
Hard to read on the.
My job is to paint, my job is to paint, and to uh. Similar here, you're telling me my margin orders, well, I'll change it, I'll, yeah, we'll change those colors.
So my question, I guess, is I understand that, and I can see this is, is valuable as a reference. Are we passing this as policy, is it, like, what happens if a, a parent comes straight to a board member? I mean, we, obviously, in practice, we all already do this. So I, I guess, I don't know, what, like, what is the purpose of passing it as a policy?
Well, it's, it's their website.
I'm not gonna do anything until you've talked to your principal.
Well, I mean, I think hopefully our, the parents are on our website, and they, they, they see this, and they say, well, maybe before I send an email to the entire board, I need to talk to Mr. Pickman first.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that it's, my interpretation of this is not necessarily, like, if a parent calls me about something and they skip all those steps that come to me, and it's a huge concern, like, I don't blame them for, like, something crazy, I'm not even gonna give an example of something crazy like that, but.
Passing this as policy is they have to follow this line with.
I think this is suggested, this is suggested.
This is what we suggest.
That's.
This, these are our lines of communication, obviously, if it's something very serious, then, yeah. Use our own discretion there.
Or suggested lines of communication.
Preferred.
So do we, do we need to, a motion to approve this then?
With, with the recommended changes.
Colors, and then nothing to title, and then I will bring you what we have for staff, uh or I'll share that, I'll do some digging on that one, so.
Maybe, could it say preferred lines of communication?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
The title.
Yeah, that.
Or recommended?
Yes.
Yeah, either prefer to recommend it, yeah.
Anyone would think.
The recommended.
Yeah, I'm, I move to approve the U S D four one six chain of command with approved changes.
Recommended.
Recommended changes.
I second.
Any discussion?
Antisto?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studaville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, five point four, approval of K, K S B dues.
Okay, um, I brought this on there, and probably mainly uh because of some of the, the new uh items that, you know, I think first we thought maybe we could wait, or the board wait till uh December, but then as I started looking at, you know, visiting with auditors, visiting with insurance companies, and we're already in a new year, it felt like uh they could not wait until then, in case uh something happened, uh when I had, well, Brock had uh conversations with the E M C, and then Sean Gordon called me uh from our auditor, so um, you know, those are just two new items when it, with this topic, that I, I just did not feel comfortable waiting. Uh, yes, there will be uh new federal li- legislation, and mainly on Title Nine, you can Google that and see, that's, that's coming down uh hot off the press, and um, you know, that is a very important to be up to date on federal title legislation that's coming down, and so some things like that, a policy uh maker, and an interpreter like K S B will, in fact, I know they're already working on that and following that closely. Uh, you don't wanna get behind the eight ball when it comes to those types of things, so. That is why uh I, I just thought, we just definitely needed to get in front of you and, and see where the board was, or answer any other questions uh when it comes to that, just. I tried to uh obviously answer and bring back every year questions, but those were items, as I was talking to my colleagues about this, uh you know, those were things, well, have you visited with your insurance company, what's their take, have you visited with your auditors? And so then when I got those answers and shared with you, I, I just knew it was important, since we're already into the new year, uh today's July eleventh, that uh and still have those conversations with you as well.
So I guess, could you tell us what the, what, did you, I'm assuming you just talked to Brock?
I did, and uh so Brock visited with the E M C underwriter, in fact, uh he was going to get, uh, as I had a board member ask, uh, and I see that in writing, and I uh said that uh Brock called E M C's underwriters, and then got the information, and then Brock called me. Uh, Brock was working on uh getting some information uh in writing, and in fact, this is for Brock at five fifteen, he says, underwriter at E M C agreed to send me some documentation, haven't seen anything yet, I'll forward along when I get it. And then I asked, it's the same as we discussed, correct, and usually Brock at five seventeen says, it is, uh so um, and I haven't checked my email, if Brock has sent that to me, but uh E M C underwriters, and we know how hard we have to work with all insurance, but when it comes to property and casualties, we don't have any options, it's not like our health insurance side, so we really have E M C as our insurance provider, all districts our size and smaller do, or we can get into the K S B uh self-funded pool that C biz administers. If you're a big district, you can't use E M C, you have travelers, so Blue Valley would have travelers, or they can get into the K S B uh self-insure pool. E M C writers, when they heard about this discussion, told. EMC writers, when they heard about this discussion, told Brock that if you don't have a, a policymaker like KSB, and we know that's currently the only option out there, that one or two options are gonna happen, either your rates are gonna go up drastically, or they're gonna consider us uninsurable. Well, then we have one option, and I don't even know of the pool, and obviously, that is K A S B, so we really don't have any options because we're not gonna be a member of KSB. Another board member asked how long we've been in KSB, I asked Brian Jordan, the executive director. It's at least since nineteen ninety-two every year, but actually, they show in nineteen eighty-seven, the district was part of an insurance pool with them as well, so it's been that long. So that's on the EMC side. Sean Gordon, our auditor, called me, and he pretty much said the same thing, remember, he comes in September, and so there's many, many, in fact, you just approved in June, many fiscal policies, and if we do not have the most current fiscal policies, we will not have a good audit. He will write those letters of concern in our audit report, because as an auditor, he wants the districts he works with to have the latest, especially fiscal policies in place.
So did EMC think that our risk, our liability increases for not, by not having a policy service provider?
I believe.
The rationale?
Drastically, Joe Aaron, obviously, you are Brock in other districts, not here, I don't know how much you feel, I mean, you, you you feel like Sharon, since you worked for Elliot and, and obviously broker EMC, did you hear what Jennifer said?
I did not.
She wanted to know if I felt like EMC feels like, or go ahead and say it again.
Yeah, my question just was, what was the re, the reasoning for EMC stating that they would increase our rates or make us uninsurable?
She, she wanted to know if, you know, they feel like that's an added liability, and so I don't know if you want to expand on that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. General liability, just general li, or liability in general is, is protecting against negligence, and when an underwriter is looking at an account to, you know, determine pricing, they're looking at what, what a risk is doing to limit their exposure, limit their exposure to negligence necessarily. So by, by us not having a layer, that layer, I'm sure they're considering us a little more, I don't know, I don't want to say risky, but, but essentially, there could be more exposure because we don't have that layer of protection from the KSB.
So, so my que, my question is, or, I don't even know what's the question, you know, we could, we can have KSB, and they can tell us all these policies that they suggest that we update, but we could say, we're not taking any of their suggestions, and we're just gonna continue on, and that makes us insurable, but we don't have to do anything that they say, I mean, I just.
There's recommendations.
Right, I mean, it just seems kind of, a little bit, I don't even know what the right word is, that we can have them and not use them, and we're, and we're insurable, but we had better have them, just kind of, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I do know, and Rob, when Rob and I met with Gwynn Mundorf, and this came up, the attorney said, similar to what Joe Aaron's saying, is if you were the, and I don't know officially, the dust is still settling, I know when I visited with Leslie Garner at KSB, wellabouts arise about, could we get into that, you know, that little policy thing he brought up last time, and Leslie Gardner was on the bottom, I just said, and by the way, have you heard of any districts not being a part? She had said no, I can't confirm that, because obviously, discussions maybe are happening tonight across the state, or since April, but at that time, Leslie at KSB said no. But when Rob and I met with Gwynn Mundorf, they said the same thing, that you're, you're setting your district up for liability, it's kind of what Joe Aaron said, because if you get into litigation, attorneys for whatever will be in suit are gonna say, you mean, two hundred and eighty-five other districts are a member, and you chose not to be? I mean, if you remember those conversations, so now even Gwynn Mundorf made that comment, that you're setting, that would potentially setting the district up for more exposure in that facet as well, because you're being an outlier when a service was provided that every other school district partakes in.
Which is where, like I said, you know, using the word negligence, which I know this can be a harsh word, but I mean, that is, that's kind of where, where I feel like EMC is coming from, when they're looking at that.
We can renew with KSB at any time, can we drop our membership anytime and get reimbursed for the months that we did not use?
I haven't asked them that, so I don't know on that, I can ask them, I do know, you guys asked if we could jump in, and they said yes, but what you're saying, if we do now, and.
Just because, you know, as, well, as Jessica, Gwynn Mundorf said, and as our conversations have been going, we're not the only school board heavily mulling over being a part of KSB for whatever reasons, people may be individually or voicing the opinions of their constituents they may have, so I just was curious as to if something in, you know, December, another association or organization comes up, are we, are we, are we tied into like a year contract with KSB, or, or what that looks like?
Well, on that, I doubt it, I mean, if you said we're no longer, that's it, your other question, would they refund half of the eleven thousand? I would have to ask that one. I assume if we sent them a letter saying we're no longer apart.
Well, sure.
We would just continue, we would just continue out our year, and then if another service was available, next year, we would just have that discussion.
I mean, I, obviously, go ahead, Sarai.
Oh, I just had a question, how do they determine what our rate is? You know, I saw ours, like ours is eleven thousand, Gardner's was forty-four thousand, you know, as a a nonprofit, you know, volunteer organization for schools to be a part of, how do they determine what, what your pricing is, I guess?
FTE, student count, so Gardner's roughly four times as big as us.
Okay, so it's just the per student we're paying?
Yeah, so if you've looked up Blue Valley, they're two or three times as big as Gardner, so theirs are gonna be, I mean, I'm starting a number, then theirs would be sixty thousand. I know the formula's based off of student headcount, I'd assume off of last year's September twentieth.
I'm assuming they, they rate legal the same too, then.
Yes.
Uh, you know, like, Joe Aaron said, though, the recommendation, most like this year, when they gave us the policies here, what, last month and two months ago, most, all of them, except for maybe one, were recommendations, and we, even then, we can either accept them or not, like she says, it's when they have a big change that, that you're saying, we're gonna need it, right? And that, I know, over the years, most of the recommendations have just been recommendations, and we accept them because they're just a worried change a little bit, it's, it's your choice to either accept them or not. They remove showers. With everything I've, you've sent us emails on, what I've heard here tonight, it's been hitting me with a lot of, because we, we've had long discussions about this in years past, and a lot of these facts have never been presented to me, I've never heard this, so I'd rather personally wait till the next meeting to do this, because I need to get some more clarification on some of this stuff I've heard tonight, and then the emails people sent me and stuff. I mean, is another meeting gonna be a problem, because I've, I've got mulling over in my head when I read the emails, but that's up to the rest of.
I mean, if there's something else you need from me, then let me know, I've tried every time to get it, just shared the latest. I worry about our exposure. But that's, and that's why I brought it to the forefront tonight, when I'm here in our insurance carrier, that I fight like heck every year, and even die doing that, our rates still go up, and I know if we don't have EMC, and the board doesn't want KSB, that's my only, I mean, I can't, you know, it's not like personal insurance, there's no other option out there, and so that's why they're saying you'll be uninsurable, and then when our auditors are gonna give, we've always prided ourselves, especially the ones who've been here, when we know Sean, so he's gonna come in September, and he's gonna stand at that podium in November, and I always am proud that he gives us a very favorable audit. We had to publish your audits, our audit is on our website, we just talked about accreditation, and now our auditor potentially is gonna give us an unfavorable audit statement based off this.
This year you shouldn't, because we've already approved the recommendation, their procedural recommendation.
No, he's going to, because we're not a member of a policy service like KSB, so he's knowing we're don't, because some of those policies you approved in June were fiscally tied, and so he, they're gonna worry now that we don't have a policy service that's watching and recommending, and you guys are approving the latest fiscal policy.
There's something like federal line comes out of the, out of the federal, then we're exposed.
Big time. And those are Office of Civil Rights, and it's, you know, titles, special ed, all those federal, those are just, I've been through OCR complaints, and those are ongoing, and, and lots of time and lots of money, and drain you, and it's not an easy compliance thing. And it's not a, actually, even when you finish, then it's years and years of follow-up, and, I mean, they're doing their job, but it's a taxing time. Sorry, Joe, Joe Aaron, sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I, maybe, I think that was Lanny maybe that was talking, and maybe he asked what I was getting ready to ask you, but I, I was just wondering, I mean, I, I, you know, we keep talking about, we just passed our policy last month, and it won't happen again until December, but that's not necessarily true, correct? I mean, things can come up all the time.
So every December and Jan, and December and June, you're definitely gonna get KSB policy updates, it's always been that way. But then, yes, if they have others from the state house, say the legislator's called a special session for something, then or yes, the federals, they don't, then they're watching that, then those would be updated. Typically, it's always gonna be June and December, but yes, those could be updated throughout the year. With board action, obviously.
I guess this is not like a question, it's more like a statement, it's just, it's, it's very beyond frustrating that are the people that elected us, put us in these positions to make these decisions, but then we're pretty much forced to say, well, you're an insurance company, and this other you know, non-government association says you guys have to do these things, so you have to do these things, like, at what point, like, it's like, why do we even need to? At what point will it be like, you have to do this, and this, and this, and this, and then why are we even here? That's just a frustrated comment that I have.
Yeah, I mean, because it came up a lot during the election. I was asked numerous times about it.
And I don't know, I mean, if it's on, you know, NSBA, and this stance, the executive director took on CRT, you know, you can review that, he was fired on the spot by the executive, the, the board of directors of NSBA. They said they had nothing, they did not approve of that writing, you can read all about that, they did independent research on that. John Heim, who's now the executive director of NSBA, is, you know, trying to fully apologize for that, he even shared that at the national conference. That's gonna take time to heal, but over and over, John said, it's local control, and that you guys decide. But yeah, that is, former executive director of NSBA went out with, I mean, that'd be like me going to do something without your permission, and he's no longer there. And you can read that, and I don't know if that's.
I mean, I, I've heard varying accounts, I also heard that he was fired because he refused to sign, sign a nondisclosure, or, or a gag order, you know, where he wouldn't talk about it, and since then, he has came out and said that it was internal with the executive board, you know, but, you know, who knows what the truth is? I mean, obviously, he wasn't the only one that signed it, there was others that signed it, but, I mean, getting back to where we're at, I mean, obviously, it comes down to policy, and we have to have somebody provide us policy, and that's whether that, another organization steps up sometime in the future. There's been a lot of discussions about it, we already know that twenty-six states have pulled out of NSBA, and they're forming their own organizations, so we don't even know if the NSBA is gonna be viable in the next couple of years. I mean, before this, they were already in financial problems, so I mean, that, I guess, that's my biggest problem with KSB, K A, too many letters, K A S B sticking with, with the national organization is, I mean, they're, they're basically riding a sinking ship, in my opinion. And I understand there's connections there with the past president from Kansas, but, I mean, at some point, you have to cut bait, but I mean, in my opinion, I think this board has gone above and beyond, and we've asked Dr. Bierman to do a lot of research, and I think we've asked a lot of good questions. I don't know if there's any, any, any more that we can do at this point other than kick the can down the road.
I mean, based on all the conversations we've had, I think it should just be like, feels like a general consensus, not a general, the majority of the board, not all the board, is still actively looking for some other policy service.
Sure.
Regardless, other than KSB.
Right.
Not saying that, not, not saying that we won't renew at this time, but that we are gonna be continuing to seek other options.
Right, and I think it needs to be clear too, that, I mean, I've heard this, heard tonight, I've been told it's been on social media, that this is all political, and this, where we got strings are being pulled by people from Topeka, and that's all hard work. I've never had a conversation with anybody about any of this kind of stuff, except for patrons, so.
Hey, Dr. Bierman, what did Gardner do as far as their response? I know they worked for it, but they renewed, and they said, this is where our stance is, how did, how did they do that, and how did they, do you remember the letter, or, you know, I know they put out a statement.
Yeah, and I, you know, I had presented this in April, we tabled it, and I had, and then, so I brought that to the board in May, their statement, I guess I could pull up Gardner's website, because that's actually where I found it, I do know they voted seven oh to renew, yeah, and they wrote a disclaimer, let's call it, that said, kind of what we just, you heard, that they had some disagreements with the organization, they did effective research, but at this time, there was no other policy service that their administrators or the board was able to find. I'm strictly paraphrasing that, and, but, pretty much, something like that, and so, you know, I know when we had those conversations, I, just when I was trying to get everything else, that was just another item I shared with you.
Yeah, I remember.
But yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but I know I did share that at the, I believe in the May board packet, if that was, so.
I think the biggest thing is, really, when it comes down, and I think this is, I'll just speak for myself here, is we want to have control, and we do, but you know what I'm saying, without any of that some of the influence that's being pushed nationally, even at KSB level, and I know we can continue to be a member of it, but I think we need to focus on what's the best for the kids in the Westford, and, you know, obviously, I heard from a lot of people, that's a great point. You know, but I think, you know, right now, it's, it's kind of out of our hands as far as you know, with the insurance and with not having other policymakers out there, I think there will be, and like Gwynn Mundorf, or Jessica said from Gwynn Mundorf, I think there's stuff in the works, there's gonna be options in the future, so my feeling is like it, you know, I, I feel like we almost have to do it right now, but I think we should continue to ask these questions and and look for options, is my, that's kind of my feeling, so.
I, I would note that we approve K A S B with a disclaimer similar to that of Gardner.
I, I think it would be, we have, or do we have to wait for a second here?
You do, and then discussion?
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion, okay, I.
No, it just, so I know Sarai and Jennifer, or Joe Aaron, you're not here, but I did find it, so ever, the board members and everyone at home and patrons here can see, this is, this is public information, this is Gardner's, this was on April fourth at their board meeting. So I'll just read it, since you two aren't here, USD two thirty-one, which is Gardner, does not actively engage in KSB's advocacy branch slash services, or usage is primarily support services, legal, board policy, student accident insurance, et cetera. In researching this topic, we found that a hundred percent of districts in the state of Kansas are members of the Kansas Association School Boards. As a result, we are unaware of any other partners who could fill these gaps should we discontinue our KSB membership. So that's in a six-page, it's called K A S B Cost Benefits Research Document, that was approved, and then when you go to their minutes, I can't, I know it was approved seven oh. to their minutes, I know it was approved 7-0.
I mean, we can-
I don't necessarily want it to say that.
Yeah.
I don't know, but that's what, I mean, was asked.
I would like to, beyond putting something on our website, I'd like to include a letter to KSB. And I've got something typed up here.
What is Jim saying?
I'd like to include a letter to KSB. If we, if we, if we approve, I would like to send a letter to them, to their board of directors. And you guys can do with this what you want, if you want to change something or not do it at all. Just say, "To KSB Board of Directors, after careful consideration and exhaustive research, we have voted with reservations to renew our membership with KSB for the 2022-2023 school year. We have found through our research that there are no alternatives to KSB for policy updates currently. We will continue as a board to find, to work to find an alternative if KSB remains associated with NBSSA. We question the reasoning for KSB to remain loyal to an organization that seems to be crumbling from within. Even before the infamous letter was sent to the Department of Justice, NBSA was experiencing financial difficulties through alleged mismanagement. With the recent withdrawal of over half of their members, we do not see how NBSA can survive and question KSB's association with a sinking ship. We strongly urge KSB membership to vote to withdraw from NBSA at the association's annual meeting in November of 2022, respectfully, USD 4 on 6 for education." If you guys edit that or throw it away or whatever.
I like that idea.
I'd like to read it before I voted on putting my stamp on it.
You want me to take a picture of it and send it to you?
Sure.
Is that something, though, that they can do after we do finish this bill, though?
Yeah, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be the, this exact verbiage right here.
We can decide.
I mean, I don't think you need to vote on it right now, Joe, unless they want to. I'm just saying, I think you need to finish this, though. Jim had his discussion, like, he wants to talk about this.
Right.
Right? And make, maybe that's a potential thing that you guys-
But I'd like to, I'd like for this to be included along, when we send the dues in.
When did we find out about the whole, about insurance, about them maybe dropping us or increasing our rates? When did that happen?
Back in my phone log, ballpark, two weeks ago, week ago, I mean, after our last meeting or obviously, I would have discussed that with you then, so.
I guess just for my opinion and for future situations, this or others, that when, like, serious pertinent information like that comes to get it to us, like, immediate, like, as soon as you get it. Because-
Yeah, that-
That would have been helpful information to have with various emails that we've received over the last couple of days. I mean, obviously, I had that information then, but we, the timeframe between getting the emails and getting that information would have been helpful because it kind of felt like I was kind of, I don't know, set up to fail at a certain point with that, with not having that, all that information.
So it looks like June 16th is when I engaged with Brock on that. Obviously, that was after the June 1. That was never the intent to do that. My job is to keep this board and district out of hot water and uncover and look under any stone, whether it's legal, whether it's dollars and cents, whether it's curriculum and everything in between. And so, that's, I want you guys to make the most informed decision and have everything. I feel like that's my job. And so I didn't have it before the, I didn't have it in April, I didn't have it in May, I didn't have it in June. As soon as we did our first regular board meeting to discuss it, you know, we're discussing it. But I understand.
Any other discussion?
My question would be, you said you didn't like the wording. She said, did she say the exact wording or just, I can't remember her actual motion. Did you say the exact wording of, or just something similar? Okay, then we're okay.
I mean, it obviously needs to be, you know.
That's all I'm concerned about.
Change to-
Okay. So we just need to, any more discussion?
But on that, am I supposed to do that now, or are we-
I think we need to do it right now. I think we need to type something up right now.
And that'll be part of, add it to the minutes, just like this is part of their minutes. So, what needs to be, I mean, it's up to you, what you want Jennifer to reflect in the minutes as a disclaimer or concluding statement on this motion and apologize about the voting. Do you have anything in mind, Joe Aaron? Changed?
I don't, but, I mean, I would like to have a little bit of time to look at it. I'm not trying to get the cold, I just, I do want to look at it.
She's the way to- What's your-
She's talking on-
Sends this message, but I just think we want to look at it first.
You're talking about my letter?
Yeah, you're talking about the letter. We're just talking about the revision, disclaimer. Did you have it? You're fine that you want a, pretty much similar to Gardner's, or you- Okay, Jim was thinking we might need to switch some things around in it.
Yeah, I mean, I did change the language. Yeah, I think the first part of it's fine.
I don't need it, it doesn't need to say that 100% of districts. I don't think it needs to say all that.
We don't know that as fact.
Right.
And-
Take that out.
I think we need to put on there that we are actively looking for-
Alternative.
Alternatives to KSB's policy.
Services.
Services. Something to that effect.
So keep the first two sentences, then strike the next one, leave the next one, and then add-
Yes, that we are-
Actively looking for alternative policy services like KSB currently provides.
Yes.
I think it should say something like that, we are renewing our membership with reservation. That's be said in the statement somewhere. I don't exactly know what all these things were throwing.
I'd like to say this, that I think this, I, this board has been completely transparent with everything we've done here. I mean, we could have, back in May, any one of us could have made a motion to approve and then turned around and voted against us, against it. And I think it would have failed miserably. So, but none of us did that because that does not build trust. And it's not being transparent and it's not being, it's not doing our, we're not doing our due diligence. We continued to ask questions. We wanted to make sure that we're doing what's right for the district. And I commend everybody for that.
So I'll strike the third sentence, add that actively looking statement, and then at the very end, district is renewing with reservations.
And then the other part, would that be later, what Jim's talking about, right?
And we'll-
No, I got, I got a copy. Obviously, Sarai.
Hey, go ahead, Joe Aaron.
I'm sorry. I don't have recommendations about renewing our, with KSB, so I don't really, I don't care for putting that wording in there, actually.
Well, we could redo the motion.
We could say that in the letter that we write.
Right.
For, for me, some of the people that have reached out to me, constituents, that don't want us to be a part of KSB, to me, it's important that it says with reservation.
Yeah, I agree.
So, where exactly is this?
It's in their minutes.
So that's all that is. I know that I wanted in the minutes.
I want it to be on the board page.
Are you asking where this document is?
Well, I mean, like, where would they put it? Yeah, so the only place that this is is in the minutes.
Put it in the minutes, which is also on our page.
But when you click on the Board of Education, though, that, I want, I think that should be, should come up.
Under the minutes of this meeting.
But, I mean-
Other, other, other than other minutes.
Yeah, I mean, that's where this is, is, I mean, I'll do that, but that's where I found it. You guys probably watched me. I mean, I went to their April 4th board, we found this in the minutes.
What's the motion again?
I don't know. Two, it, I believe, I believe it's the approval of KSB dues with the similar verbiage of the Gardner disclaimer, which is pretty vague. Just, I mean, it's- Is that correct? Yeah, it is.
I, I think so, but Joe Aaron said she didn't want to have that in there, but that was, so I'm, I, it's-
She didn't want to have the reservation, the wording, is what she was saying.
Okay.
That Jennifer suggested, like, with reserve, I think that was her concern, what I'm gathering. I know it's all getting confusing.
She said she didn't have reservations. You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm confused.
Right, but I think Jennifer wanted to have a statement in the actual disclaimer about the board in general having reservations, and Joe Aaron didn't.
You could put the majority.
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure I know what I'm-
Yeah, yeah. The general motion is just that you approve the dues with a similar disclaimer, and then Dr. Bearman has taken the suggestions from the board members to write the disclaimer our way, not Gardner's way.
So then, will we have to motion to, can we, can we motion to?
Not really, because it just says similar, unless you just want to-
Joe Aaron's not agreeing with what a lot of the other, the rest of us is agreeing with. So do we want to make that a separate motion?
I think your majority is fine.
The majority of the board.
Just put majority.
I've got to work.
Yeah.
But I think just her wording in the motion is okay to cover that. And then I think, just if you guys, part of the discussion was to, you want to talk about your, or look at your letter.
Right.
For that'll be for the August board, you know?
Okay.
And I, and I guess after you construct all this words we just threw at you for this, I'd like to obviously see that before we publish it somewhere.
Because it'll be in the minutes, so you approve-
So I'll, I'll send that to you and you'll look them over and then you'll, we'll make corrections before it's-
And then, if, minutes aren't officially approved until the August board meeting anyway. So they're not published until the consent agenda will reach the next month.
Does all that make sense?
Where's my motion when I was second? I said, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's seconded, so we just need, we were, any more discussion? Okay, Intisdell?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studerville?
Joe Aaron?
Joe Aaron?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Motion pass 7-0.
The last item is just the revenue neutral rate. So last year, districts were, all taxing entities were tasked by the legislators to look at a revenue neutral rate, depending on assessed valuations of their, you know, what their assessed valuation is doing. And I've shared with the board, and I know Jacob, you weren't here for the budget one, but I mean, see, you've been around for a while. Taxing entities, when it comes to school districts or taxing, is very different because we're the only taxing entity that has state aid. So our budget is based off how many kids we have. So we have, you know, how many kids, we transport, special ed, CTE classes, you name it. That comes in a form, what's called in the general fund, Form 150. And that tells us how many millions of dollars we have in the general fund. And then we do the same thing in the LOB. And so, that tells us how many dollars. And then any fund in schools is local effort plus the state aid equals that number. And if taxes go up, that doesn't mean we get more money. That means local effort goes down. As I said, we're working through the budget, but I'll give you an example of what's happening now. Since our assessed valuation went up in our local option budget, last year, state gave us over 39% in state aid. Since our assessed valuation went up, this year, we're only going to get 36% in state aid.
So if we, if we vote not to go revenue neutral, neutral, we're going to get less money?
Yes.
Because the state's not going to-
That's absolutely-
But that's going to, the-
Raise taxes.
Raise taxes to the, our community, correct?
Yeah, but what we need to remember, we were hovering in the 66 to 65 mils for a long time. We're down in the 50 mils, so that's a 15 mil decrease that the board threw, not the passage of the first bond, but the second bond issue, when the board came back and these three were on there, and cut that down, so it was more affordable. So 15 mil decrease. And so hovering around 50 mils, there's not a district, and obviously, you'll be sharing all this, and I've shared it before, that is that low. In our league, obviously, Johnson County, I mean, when we're at 50 mils, the next closest is Paola, then Shawnee Mission. But for example, Yudora is at 69 mils. So a $200,000 house in Yudora is paying almost $1,500 of taxes. And Lewisburg is 1069. So over $400 difference for that same house. So, you know, Olathe is 68 mils. So we have the lowest mil rate around. You know, these types of discussions, and as I shared before, have to be year-round conversations. They have to be before Sarai and Rob and Jim go into session negotiations with the teachers. We all know, the teachers and the board, and it's public information, the board gave teachers raises with more money than the state's going to give us. We have already, probably, I've probably already done this year's fiscal purchases for buses and gym floors and a new tractor and a mower out of this year's capital outlay at the tune of $700,000. And so if my capital outlay is going to be cut, you know, so if the board wishes to do rate-neutral revenue decisions, we have to have those conversations very early. Or we're making decisions that could really set the district up in financial peril. So-
So the, the financial decisions we've made prior to tonight were based on the fact that we were going to go over rate-neutral?
Yeah, and maxed out. I mean, the state knows how much money they're going to give us, because remember, we are given money based off last year.
I guess, I'm just trying to understand that we are budgeting with already the intent of going over rate-neutral before we had this conversation tonight?
Well, we don't know that, because remember, the state knows how much money is going to be in our budgets. And then the formula is going to be local effort plus state aid equals that number. So say our general fund's 12 million, it's that simple math formula. What the state doesn't know, when they tell us ahead of negotiations and stuff, that, hey, Lewisburg, you're going to get 12 million in the general fund, once again, that's just an example, is what assessed valuations aren't in yet from the, from this assessed, from the Fraser Office. And so they don't know that formula. So they know that if we are required, every district in Kansas has to assess their taxpayers, 20 mils in the general fund, doesn't matter, that whatever you can do 20 mils, the state's going to make up the difference. And then our LOB is 33% of our general fund minus special education. And we have a legal max in that. This year was roughly 3.6 million. So the state knows they're not going to give us a penny more than that legal max. So based off what your assessed valuation's going to do, they will backfill the rest. Since our assessed valuation went up higher, like I said, last year, they gave us 39%. Now they're only going to give us 36%. We don't get one more dollar than that. So it doesn't mean that tax dollars don't go up to support schools. What it does mean is, it doesn't equate that we get more operating cash. Because schools, unlike cities, counties, townships, cemeteries, everyone else, no state aid, we get state aid. And it's to do that because, take Galena and Burlington, and I think I've shared that example, same-sized school district in the state of Kansas. One has the Wolf Creek Power Plant, the other has not. So they have to give state aid. It's an equate, it's an equity formula as well. And no one knows exactly what that is until assessed valuations come in as well. And so, yeah, I polled our- And, uh, so, yeah, I, I polled, uh, everyone I always do about this with school districts. I, no school district can I find is, is, I mean, they're taking to their board anyway to exceed rate or revenue neutral. Uh, they're also trying to, to lower the mill rate and, and that would be my goal too. I, I mean, uh, in the, uh, let me pull this. Yeah, so what this shows is so by, except by July twentieth, we, uh, every taxing entity, the city, the rec, uh, you name it, has to send this document to Janet White. Uh, so what I'm showing is that we definitely, and I'm not saying we will have a, a mill rate of fifty point four one nine, but that is what we're saying is the highest our mill rate would go. Like I said, we just got into this software. We are going to, to the state department tomorrow. Fifty point four one nine is lower than what it was last year. Honestly, I want to work hard to even lower that more. Uh, but, you know, we were tracking at sixty six, sixty six, sixty five, sixty six, sixty four point nine, sixty four point nine, sixty four point eight, sixty four point eight. If the bond would have passed the first time, the plan was still to go. Well, then it did plummet and for one year we were at forty five. And this last year we just got finished with, we were at fifty point four nine five. Sure, you know, maybe we can get a mill rate in at fifty, uh, or even at very upper forty nines. But we have to obviously, we, we are competing and so I have to see, you know, not that I want to be at sixty seven, sixty eight or even at sixty or even fifty five, but if all these other districts are maximizing their budgets and when you hired a social studies teacher tonight, that was the lone candidate. And so, uh, and like I said, we. Yeah, that's a first, uh, thing with Amy, but, um, and so this is just meeting our statutory deadline to send this to Janet White that, uh, that is the intention. There's hearings, so it, when this is in place, then the budget hearings have to be between August twentieth and September twentieth. So it falls in our regular board meeting, September twelfth. We'll have two hearings. We had to have that last year. You'll first have the rate neutral hearing. And then after that, you'd have the budget hearing. And so, but between then, I mean, August, obviously we're going to be presenting the budget to you. You're going to be looking at that, uh, you're going to be able to say, you know, or I'll be able to share this. Why really, I mean, there's, there's five funds, twenty mils go to the general, so twenty out of fifty mils is there. Then you have the L O B, depends on once again, year to year, roughly that's going to hover between ten to twelve mils every year. So there, and all that is where we pay teacher salaries and pay the bills, everything else, the general and L O B. So now you're up to thirty out of fifty mils. The next one is our bond and interest. Bond passed, it's like a mortgage, we have to make that. So that's roughly going to be between eight to ten mils every year. So now we're at forty of those fifty mils. The only two other funds is capital outlet, which capital outlet maxes at eight mils. Um, and we get nineteen percent state aid. That's based the formula off our last bond. So we're paying off these final bond payments. Katie has one bond left of the oh six bond that built Rockville and did stadium additions and H V A C at the middle school. We're getting nineteen percent state aid on that. We're going to now get zero percent state aid on the new ones, but capital outlet is still tied to that old formula. So for every hundred thousand dollars we get, the state gives us nineteen thousand dollars. Plus, we, you know, when the first bond didn't pass, we, we kind of, I mean, and others can correct me if I'm wrong, but kind of told the patrons, you know, hey, we have a healthy capital outlet. It does get state aid, the bond issue doesn't. That's one way that we can continue to do some of these without tax with lowering the bond rate, which is why we were able to go from sixty five to fifty. Um, and then the final one is just a little bit in the cost of living, which as I discussed, districts like Lewisburg that have a high assessed valuation, Blue Valley being the highest one. The average home price last year in Blue Valley was five hundred and five thousand dollars. It's average home price. Uh, the average home price in Kansas was a hundred and seventy three thousand. What the state does is they times that by, it's like two point two one or something to get to like the two hundred and twenty thousand. And then districts are above that, so Lewisburg, we're at, Katie, I don't know if you read, it's two, upper two hundreds. And so districts have high, have a high cost of living, so all the teachers just left, but to give them an affordable wage, so they can now like, or work here, but live here. Uh, you tap into that. So five funds make up that fifty. We don't have anything else out there, uh, to assess. So all those funds I shared with you in July, special education, driver's ed, food service, those all come out of those five funds.
Let me ask you this, if, if we did, say we did decide to go revenue neutral, what would be the, do you have an estimation of what the shortfall would be?
Yeah, uh, sizable and, and I sent this other, uh, this, not that one. It's this document that every county sends to the district. So, and where it really, so right there, they're saying to have the same revenue in the general fund, eighteen point two nine four. Well, that's right off the top is not allowed. It's state statute that every district has to assess twenty mils. So that is not even allowed. Districts have to assess twenty mils. So to get the exact same penny, instead of twenty mils in the general, it could be eighteen point two nine four, but it's not allowed. Every district has to do twenty. Capital outlet to get the same revenue is seven. And then they add up all others, they, and which would be obviously these up here, our bond and interest, our cost of living and our supplemental general. So you see last year, our supplemental general was twelve point three. Once again, it's early, but, uh, you know, we're looking at our L O B. Actually, we're dropping the mill rate unless Mr. Dennis tells us differently. So preliminary, Katie and everything, and our L O B is going to go to eleven point three nine five. So we're actually dropping the supplemental general, the L O B mill rate by one mil, but the general.
If we, if we went revenue neutral, would be a forty five mil, so basically, a little over that, right?
Yeah, well, you can't be because you actually have to go, you really are going to add.
Well, you'd add one point seven one. Um, so it'd be what, forty six, almost forty seven? So we'd be, we'd be three mils down, right?
Yeah, so a lot less revenue and, uh.
So what does that equate to though?
And I can get that, uh.
Pretty roughly.
And there's state aid. So the general fund, uh, we only locally raised about twenty five percent. So of that, say roughly what, almost is twelve million, we only generate, well, what we generate is our assessed valuation, which obviously, that's why, uh, it's on this document, your general assessed valuation is a different number than all others because it used to be they took twenty thousand off of a house, now they're taking forty thousand. So your assessed valuation, this is actually the rec commission, uh, they give that to us, obviously that's flow through. But same with the rec, I mean, so for them to generate what they did last year, uh, it's showing that they could do eight, seven point, or point eight seven eight of a mil instead of one to get exactly the same value. Now that's, is up to the rec commission to decide that. But obviously that's our money that we, uh, that flows through us, but that's why it's tied to that as well.
So if we, if we say we want to do the neutral rate thing, that will increase taxes, right? We say yes on it? So, and by, you don't know how much yet, is that what you're saying? I mean, by how many mils?
If, um, by improving the rate neutral rate, you will lower our, our revenue, uh, and lower our spending power. And so that concerns me when we've already.
Oh, it's going to lower?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Will not lower taxes, lower the amount.
Lower.
Well, it would, it would.
The trade off.
It would keep taxes flat. What that's saying is you assess the same number because your house went up.
Your appraisals are.
Get more money.
Yeah, or our taxes aren't necessarily, our taxes are going up, but our mill rate isn't going up. It's a valuation. Now, you're wasting it going up, but.
Yeah, but we, we talk about, you know, cost of living and everything like that. I mean, the cost of living on taxpayers is increasing crazy right now. I mean, with inflation, what, what it is, I mean, I can't.
We already have the lowest school mill rate.
And I, and I get that.
Tax, I mean, not, we're not even in the middle. We are the lowest. There are many other taxing entities. And I'm not blaming the others. In fact, the city of Lewisburg has a lower mill rate than Spring Hill on the Miami County side, Osawatomie and Paola. But that's not for this body to decide. Miami County, when you compare it to a hundred and five counties, does not have a high mill rate compared to Johnson County, absolutely.
I mean, I don't know.
We're victim of our own success here because people want to live in Lewisburg, in this school district. So it's caused this housing shortage and caused the price of houses to go through the roof, which has caused the appraisals to go.
Yeah, people want to live here, but people want to continue to be able to live here too.
I understand.
Like, I mean, just during the elections when I was going door to door talking to people, the, I would say ninety percent of the thing that the first, first thing people said is, don't raise my taxes. I can't, I can't hardly afford to live here now.
We're not the only one raising taxes and we should know how much that's going to be.
I know, I guess that's my concern is we don't know.
Well, that's the topic could be.
So to prove something that we don't exactly even know what it's going to be.
Brian, you're not doing on tonight's thing, if you're not approving the rate neutral rate, that's a hearing, you're not approving the budget. You're approving what Jim said, you're only approving the cap that we're telling the taxpayers and Janet, that's the highest, which that's even lower than last year. So the tricky part is we just got the budget. We, I mean, we have to work through this. I hope we can go a little bit lower. I'm always looking out for tax relief, but, uh.
So what was our, what was it last year that we used? Sorry?
Fifty point four nine five.
So, I mean, fifty points, say fifty point five.
So that's where it's the lowest, but our teachers are one of the highest. So we've got to come up with money somewhere.
My worry is that, uh, if this is the goal of, of the board, then, um, you know, it, it needs to, we're not giving good, solid raises, we're not, I mean, I get need to not buy a bus when, you know, like, I. School budgets are always moving and as I said, we're going to be three months into the fiscal year before September, if yours is even approved. But we, we showed the teachers, I mean, there are reports from the state department, we're going to get a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in our general fund, more than this year. But yet our raises were three times that.
Let me ask you this.
And that was to maximize this, but now if we go back, uh, you know, those are serious concerns.
Brian, I mean, they're, they're, they're changing it from twenty thousand to forty thousand, so that's, there's going to be some relief there, right?
Yes.
So do we know, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, if we go with fifty point four one nine, which is the top, we could go with that forty thousand, that extra twenty thousand goes into the tax relief on, on a home. How much more will it?
Yeah, and I actually have all those formulas on, uh, what a mill rate does already for the August board meeting when we go into budget. And I actually have exactly that, uh, is how it's figured is, I don't want to bore you a lot tonight, but take a two hundred, take whatever home, so take a two hundred and fifty, as Jim's saying. They separate the general versus all the other funds. So if we're at, just say we're at fifty mils. So they take the first twenty mils and in that one, that two hundred and fifty, it used to, you'd take, uh, twenty thousand off the top of that house. Now they're going to take forty thousand off that house. So now that house, two hundred and fifty minus forty is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. You're not assessed on two hundred and ten thousand dollars, you're assessed at eleven and a half percent. So the next formula that you do is you take two hundred and ten thousand times point one one five and you get that. So, you know, you're roughly at, say, twenty three thousand dollars is what you're assessed. Uh, and then you figure out that. And then on the other ones though, you don't get that exemption on, on there. So it's two hundred and fifty thousand times the eleven and a half percent. So that's how, you know, I tell you that on a two hundred thousand dollar house, it was one thousand sixty nine dollars because you got the general plus all those other funds. It's how I know in Udora, it's, because they're at sixty nine mils, it, it's almost fifteen hundred dollars. The general's going to be the same, no matter where that two hundred thousand dollar house or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house resides. It's all those other funds that, you know, we're only at thirty, where a district like Udora and Olathe are almost pushing thirty eight to forty mils. So that difference is a higher.
So, so what we're being asked to do tonight is to affirm that we will not go over fifty point four.
Yes.
We do, we don't know what the mill rate's going to be yet.
That's correct.
We have the budget hearing.
Yes.
August.
It actually, you will be presented it in August and then the board will be asked to, uh, if, if you agree with that or the majority, you will be, then Katie puts that in the paper. It's required to be in the paper for two weeks. And then that allows taxpayers to review it. And then at the budget hearing, which will be September twelfth, we'll have this rate neutral rate, revenue neutral rate hearing first, six, uh, for any taxpayers and then say roughly right after, six oh two, six oh five, we will have the budget hearing. That has always been the process. The only thing is now this, this R and R has been too bad.
But in August, we'll know how much that's going to, you know, the total amount to it, that hopefully it's less than fifty point four.
My goal, uh, which is already lower than last year, uh, not by much, I get that. Uh, but, uh, because I, I do like that we can have the lowest mill rate in the league and around and lower than, and still provide. But that's tricky, uh, because, um, should we be the lowest taxing entity of school around? I don't know. Uh, but if that equates that we then can't provide some good services and pay our teachers, I don't know if I agree with that. Because maybe there's a lot of people in this community that would, from just a school district standpoint alone, would, would want taxes for that. Maybe some of the other taxing entities, not as much, I don't know. But, uh, a lot of people live here for schools. And so I do try to balance that. And when we're the lowest by the long ones, we know Osawatomie school district is fifty eight mils. So they're eight mils higher than us. The closest is Paola. I don't know exactly what they're doing, but I hope it can be a little lower than them we were last year. Uh, but others aren't even close. Even Shawnee Mission's higher, but, uh, and like I said, I'll share that list with you all next time. They'll all be off last year, which are ones I know. I don't know exactly the conversations. What I'm hearing from districts, when I ask their superintendents is that, uh, they are all going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, but try to either lower the mill rate a little bit or keep it flat. And that's what, you know, uh, now Pleasant Tim was the only one, but obviously way different, smaller district, but I do reach out to our special ed co-op. He even said that Pleasant and Mike, that increased their mill rate by two. They don't have assessed valuation as we do as well. But it said, district right north is Blue Valley. They were at fifty eight point nine six seven mils last year and we were at fifty. And so two hundred thousand dollar house was ten sixty nine here, a two hundred thousand dollar house in Blue Valley was twelve sixty four and twenty four cents. What feeds into the overall taxes is if you live in Overland Park or Lee Wood, or if you live, you live in Johnson County, obviously. Um, and so there are many other taxing entities out there that go into that equation. Uh, but, um, that's just, yeah, this is really just to say, that's the cap. I'll work on, and you guys will have meetings, several other meetings to discuss that and see that and, and give us and will eventually approve the budget in Sept- on September twelfth. Uh, even if you would approve that one, it would be lower mill rate than last year. Uh, but, um, I, I will have that with Jim's asking on, and it actually even show, I mean, how much you were paying, well, someone was paying, you know, we, for the bond issue, we lowered the mill rate when you were at sixty five mils. So every mil out of two hundred thousand dollar house is a twenty three dollar, uh, reduction. So to go from sixty five to fifty mils is three hundred and thirty dollars of tax relief that the board gave ours. So even if now your home is worth two hundred and fifty thousand, you're still paying less taxes because you're at fifty mils versus, like I said, for many years, I just went back to twenty twelve. I mean, we're at sixty six, sixty six, sixty five, sixty six, sixty five, say sixty five, sixty four, sixty four. And now we're at fifty. And, uh, so a sizable tax decrease. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we kind of said, we can live with the lower bond because we'll work hard in capital outlay, uh, and some other funds to, to do the projects, uh, that we did have to. I mean, when I was only Jacob, Rob and Lanny, but we had to go through and say, hey, we can hold off on this project, this project to lower that. Obviously a big one was the baseball softball complex, but that didn't get us down because we had to cut ten million. And so, but then, unless I misinterpreted, it was then we'll work hard through capital outlay and other resources and time. So maybe not do them all right now, but have a strategic plan on how we do do those things through capital outlay.
And we want to be able to continue to do the things that weren't done in the past, like updating our buildings, air conditioners, things like that, that were let go.
Yes.
Before we'll go into that situation.
One I've shared.
Lanny was here for it.
Yeah, and I've shared my concerns that, uh, every unit use, when you go by the high school, or if you're in the high school, they're twenty year old units. We need to have a plan before we know it, Rock Hills will be to be replaced.
We don't wanna be in the same situ- we don't wanna be in the situation where passing a bond.
No, and so we're working hard on that, but it, we didn't fulfill all of those, and so then it's my job and working with Doug and others on. You know, having a good plan on, I mean, cause I can't even imagine what it would cost to, right now, change out all the H V C in the high school. Um, I don't want to, as Jim just said, say, oh, then we need to pass a bond issue. So we need to be strategic on that, mindful of tax dollars, I, I understand, but I'm proud that we're at the bottom. It still can do what we are, and I know many probably people don't understand that, it's, they get one tax bill with everything in there. I also don't know if people understand where we are, the only taxing entity that is different than everyone else. When you are at another one, the library, the rec, the county township cemetery, it's just your assessed valuation, cause there's no state aid. So if you don't lower it, you are getting more money. And even I guess on those entities, and I don't try to run those, but there is a cost of living, they wanna pay their employees more and diesel fuel and gas. Road grader all costs more for them as well, but that's not how it works in our, in our budget. Uh, cause we count kids and it's a year behind. So we already know what our general fund, minus the waiting, so those are current year, but those don't influence the budget a lot. So yeah, we had a hundred kids on free lunch last year, and this year we have a hundred and five, changes a little bit, but not millions of dollars. So changes a few hundred to maybe a thousand dollars, so. The legislature put that in place a couple of years ago, so that would help them predict how much money they need to fund schools when they're in session. What was happening is legislators were leaving in April or May, allocating. Money they thought that schools needed in August and September, and that schools were saying they needed more money. So they are, we're a year behind, so when they left Topeka in April, they know pretty much that they have funded education for that year. Now that system's kinda hard for rapid, you know, growing school districts, One Spring Hill, Blue Valley and Baseline, when others are growing by five hundred kids. They don't get that, those kids for a year, they have to make do, but. Isn't used to allow current waiting, so.
So when we, when we get, when we have this budget hearing. How do we arrive at the number? I mean, you're gonna have more hard facts.
Yeah, it's just this.
So if, if, say if you came in and said, okay, we're gonna be at fifty mil and. All of us wanted to go forty nine, I mean, is that possible? I mean, if we wanted, if, if we wanted to.
Well, so we, you know, would recommend, obviously you can't touch to twenty, general's always gonna be there. L O B, I wouldn't recommend that one, because then you would be saying, no, no, let's not do thirty three percent.
But I mean, we could, if we wanted to, we could.
Really, your two funds, well, three, you could say, do we need to make as much payment to our bonds?
Right.
I mean, we obviously need to make our payments, and we have payments in September and March, and so. And Piper Sandler, as our actually have told us, how much money we need in there. Uh, I would argue when assessed valuations are good, you should add that bond fund, say our assessed valuation doesn't go up as much next year. Well, then we don't need to put as much money in our bond fund, which then allows us to lower a, another ba- a fund. So our overall mill rate can still go down, because then if we don't put money in that bond fund this year when we can. So say we can put nine mils and add a little balance, then I don't have the opportunity to say, let's go down to seven mils next year to give tax relief. Cause I don't have the balance to do that, so when assessed valuations go up, my opinion, it makes sense to pad. And all is, all you're doing is paying off the bond early, like you're paying a mortgage off early, uh, you know, capital outlay. We've been at eight mils for, since, uh, twenty fourteen, um, that's when state, uh, schools were able to go from four to eight mils. Um, if you lower that, you lose, like I said, every nineteen thousand dollars for every hundred thousand, so right now one mil's one eighty five. So almost thirty eight thousand, uh, if that was almost posted to, and then the cost of living, which we've since, uh, twenty eighteen. So for the last five years, it relied on that to do just that, help with the cost of living, uh, that we know it's a higher place to live. And, uh, so we can keep, uh, competitive salaries, so not a lot of wiggle room. Um, is there some? Yeah, and, um, my plan is to see what Katie and I can do tomorrow. But, you know, this is just a document, it has to be, and it's, that's not for us, county, cities, all those tax entities are doing the same thing. Uh, and sending this to her, and then they also have to have their regular budget meetings, and they also have to have their, uh, revenue neutral rate, uh, hearings as well. Uh, but yeah, I'll get that on your, uh, idea on the two hundred and fifty, uh, and the forty thousand, in fact. I always present that, just so people know what a mil equates to taxes, uh, cause that's obviously always a little confusing. Um, and, uh, on the home value, and even if it's one up the couple of years. Definitely people are seeing, uh, from a school silo only, a tax savings from where they were. Even with higher assessed valuations, just because of the drastic mill rate drop from sixty five to fifty. That is a large mill rate reduction.
And this is the, this is the first year from the twenty to forty?
Yes, and I believe the state did that to give some tax relief to homes. It's only on homes, so that's not for businesses or for land, but obviously, there's a lot of homes in this, in every, a lot of people have of it. Uh, because actually, uh, there's, uh, not that, uh, standard deduction, and then, um. Like, for example, businesses are assessed at twenty five percent instead of eleven and a half. So, and then land's hard because it's all based off, I mean, I couldn't even give you a formula. I, cause it's all based off production and mineral rights and, you know, obviously pasture's different than prop land, and you have oil and gas, and so. Um, I, I can't just give you a formula on that one, but homes and businesses are easy for me to show you.
I mean, to me, that number's low, I mean, we should be happy with that, I understand the taxpayers, but you gotta run a district with money. I mean, and, and a, a mil, Brian, how much would a mil even save a?
Twenty three dollars, that's why when I say.
I mean, twenty three dollars.
That's why when I say that ten sixty nine, it's because I took twenty three dollars times that fifty.
The school benefits more receiving money than a taxpayer has to pay out.
That's on a two hundred thousand dollar house.
Right.
Forty six, six hundred is sixty nine dollars.
It's not like thousands of dollars that we're raising their taxes, and what was the mill rate last year?
Uh, what, uh, uh, la- last year's fifty point four nine five, so fifty point five, so, so we're, um, but it was hovering, uh, sixty.
So technically, we don't raise the mill, we're not raising taxes. Correct?
Well, you're, you're raising.
It's up to the county and, and all the assessed values and all that. So technically, we're not raising their taxes.
Their, their valuations.
Evaluation went up, and so like I said on that formula, now, like an example I used on that L O B. That's why the state's gonna lower our A from thirty nine to thirty six, because they say locally, you can support that three point six million dollars. Uh, easier, cause you gotta higher assessed valuation.
Cause we gotta take this county, that's what you're saying.
No, I'm not saying.
Right, yeah, that's what you're saying.
What, but, what I always wanna make clear is, cause it, people's taxes in the silo of four sixteen might go up. Uh, and probably do, but we're the only taxing entity where that doesn't equate. That we are getting more operating dollars, because the state will lower the tax.
We're, 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 we're banking on a hundred, what is it, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars extra next year.
Yeah, and we gave over, well over three hundred thousand in, in raises, so that's why, and I'm not, I mean, no one has this idea that tonight, but I just. Put that out there again, that if that is the board's thoughts in the future, then I need to know that because, um. And, and they go, well, all the board and negotiations, we're a people business, so that's where a lot of our money's going. But it's just on projects that, you know, we bought these buses, but with the delay, we're still not even gonna get these buses if we're lucky till. Um, I mean, I ordered those way back, probably in January of last year, and we're gonna be lucky if we get them in next January. From High Point, North Carolina, but we've, we've put our foot and said, hey, we're gonna buy those buses when they get here on this budget. So then if I'm lowering the capital outlay where those are coming from, you know, so it's just. Or you're gonna love the three gym floors, the two at the high school and the middle school one, that's being out of this capital outlay, and if, uh, you know, we need lower, those are things then. Okay, I guess, even though it's been thirty years, or the middle schools gym floor's never been redone, then I guess we'll go another year. And so, that's just the conversations that you need to be sharing with me, uh, cause I, yeah, I don't wanna put us in a. Tough position, I'm just with staff or with, with purchases, so if that's the board's intent, uh. Then that's okay, but I'll just, that would be communicated with me, so we don't go down that, that path. But yes, once again tonight, no, we'll, we'll just wanna keep you on, but that, that's just a saying the highest, it's saying that. The board, uh, has an intention to, uh, exceed the revenue neutral rate, doesn't mean they have to. And then our hearing for this and our regular budget meeting will be on September twelfth at six P M out here.
Alright, do we need a motion then?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to approve the notice of revenue neutral rate intent of fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And Tisdale?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, six point oh, that, uh, I move, we go into executive session with the superintendent to discuss school security for students, for the exception. Of di- district security matters under K O M A, and open meeting will resume in the board's room at.
Ten fifteen. Second.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I generally.
And just.
My computer went dead.
Announcements, uh, August 8, 2022 regular board meeting will be at Circle Road at 6 p.m. Seven point oh, I move to adjourn, I'm, I'm moved to approve adjourn. Please agree. I move to approve adjourn the July 11th regular Board of Education meeting at 10:34 p.m. Any discussion?
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Is he still there? Uh, but?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studiville?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
I can pass.
Is Bradmore still looking like it's gonna be done?
Yeah.
By the time?
We're pushing hard, I've lost everything.